Are you, are we good? Okay. Or so, so I want to go over some of the proposed changes anyway. Yeah, like I said in an email, there was a, I caught an error in the sheriff's budget where the search and rescue salaries had about twice as many hours in them as they were supposed to, so I brought that down and that probably carved off about $179,000 out of the sheriff's budget, so that helps. The, the other thing that I'm going to propose is that contained within the planning and zoning budget, community development department, we have $150,000 for a general plan update, and I don't know if we want to discuss whether or not we want to budget for that at all, but I would propose that if we do budget for it, that we budget to pull it from fund balance as opposed to budget for it from a property tax increase because it's something that only happens once every five or six years. So, I've incorporated that change.
You incorporated it already?
I mean, into this, I mean, we can change it back, it's a pretty simple thing, but I just wanted to see what the bottom line was. And also Elaine Gisler was fine with making a couple additions to the travel council's budget. One was to move the Arches transportation planning, which was about $20,000, from the council's professional services line item over to the travel council, and so that reduced the general fund by about $20,000, which was helpful. And also CNHA was okay with the travel council increasing their contribution to staff at the MIC in exchange for them purchasing their own carpet for the MIC next year, and so that was another $18,000 that we could divert into the general fund, so that helped also. And, so, all those things combined, at this point, the general funds necessary tax increase would be $1,353,632, down from what we've noticed originally of $2,111,000.
So how much is that down?
It is...
It's increased by 757,368 dollars less than noticed, if we go with those recommendations. I, I've been emailing you, and I know it won't affect the budget, but I think it would be a nice symbolic thing for us to do, is for the county council to let not have a COLA increase this year.
I'd like to see it across the board, since everybody just got raised. I don't see a point in the COLA.
No, the point in the COLA is to keep from having...
Start it next year.
Whatever. But, that's what I would, I would propose, is just to the county council. I...
What's the hearing process for the councils that separate from other elected officials?
Yeah, and so the, because the council's compensation is contained within our optional plan for government, we have to do a separate public hearing to amend that. You know, and state code requires that all elected officials have a public hearing if their compensation's going to be adjusted, but it's an extra step for the council because their salaries are in that ordinance for our form of government. So that'll be a public hearing tonight, but, I don't know, I mean, I could go in real quick and zero it out and see what...
I know it's not a lot, but I think it would go a long way.
Because I, I factored in just the salary difference.
And we got a good, we got a good increase this year.
There might be a little bit of like... I mean, yeah, it's not going to make any significant difference in the property tax rate, but, um, yeah, let me see what the balance would be. So about $4,126, they would say.
I, you know, I've talked to, because I didn't, you know, I want, I've talked to just various people I've known to see if they, I said it wouldn't reduce it much, but would it symbolically help, and they said they thought it would be a, you know, a gesture of faith to, they say that we're not going to. So, if I made that proposal, would I do it here and we would do it, or would it have to be during?
Well, I guess we'll just run on consensus if we can get it now, because I need to fill out the...
So we can do this?
...resolution with the bottom line numbers, so it'd be easier for me to...
Just have a...
...do the calculation now rather than wait for the meeting.
So straw poll?
On board.
I'm on board.
Yeah. Evan?
Uh, I don't feel strongly one way or another.
All right.
I, I mean, I think that the thing to realize is that part of the big correction we just made a little while ago, the compensation, was to fall back in sync, and so...
And I think next year we should continue with the COLA, but I think this year, since we got the big raise, I think it's a, anyway, I support it, obviously.
Okay.
Chris, could you just go to the library really quick?
Yeah.
Just kind of run me through their stuff?
So at the library... So the library's requisite...
Jaylen, can you hear us?
Evan?
Yeah?
Yes, I can hear you.
Great.
Can you hear me?
We can.
You're sitting on a coffee cup.
That you could tell me if they're, because they're not open on Sundays, right?
We're just starting to look at the library budget.
Or are they open on Sundays?
Do you know, do you know if the library's open on Sundays at all?
It's not.
It's not? No.
And Saturdays, limited hours.
And holidays are off.
Yeah. So I did do an analysis, let me see if I can find it, I sent it to you guys, it kind of showed where the increases were. Let's see if I can try to remember when I sent that. Yeah, I don't think that this email on my laptop is up to date, but most of the increase to the library was just salary and benefits and a contribution to capital maintenance because their building's starting to get to the point where we're having to do repairs on it. We had about a $17,000 roof issue this year, so, but besides that, their budgets pretty much remain the same, it's, you know, but they've been, they've been running in the red for a few years now. But like I said, the increase at the library, there's no new position requests, no new requests really for anything, it's, the operating budget's mostly the same. So it's, it's really just salary and benefits over the years, plus that. This right here is kind of new, it's $20,000 for capital buildings, and like I said, I think that we're getting to the point if we don't start budgeting for maintenance on that building, it's just going to end up being an emergency purchase.
Just like, yeah, we've had that before, we don't want it again.
Yeah, no, we need to start. And what's the trail maintenance people, where are they at, what's their budget like?
So they are in a new fund that we created this year called Parks Trails and Recreation. They don't, they don't really have any, property tax doesn't go into this fund, and so it doesn't really factor into the property tax increase, but most of their funding is coming from grants, donations, and then the optional transportation sales tax. So this budget is a combination of sort of the paved path maintenance budget that we've had for a long time, and that kind of rolls over, and also the active trails and transportation employees and their activities. So it's, first year we've really had them on our payroll. But what I do generally with this paved path maintenance line, it looks, you know, it's a big number, quarter of $52,000, but that, that's the, the balance of the, of the fund that I budget to spend, and if we don't spend it, then it just rolls back over. But at some point when they do, like a seal coat, or have to do any big maintenance on the elevated bridge, or the pedestrian bridge, or any of that, it's all going to end up being pretty expensive, and so...
Yeah.
Instead of having to cough it up all in one year, we save up for it. And then this professional and technical one is more sort of Zachariah's Spanish Trail Drive pedestrian path. So that, yeah, that multi-use path idea, and so that's the $100,000 that the county set aside in the past for that, and so we're just rolling that over also. But besides that, it's salary, benefits, and operations, it's kind of several different things all kind of rolled into one, but in the long haul, I kind of see that this may, you know, this fund may expand to include more than just really trails, but at this point, that's really all it is. But yeah, there's no property tax that goes to this fund.
And did you have a chance to look through the public safety here, the sheriff's budget besides the salaries?
Yeah, and so the increases are in overtime, so if we go take a look, I mean, that's...
If we hire somebody else, that'll cut that down, right?
Hypothetically.
Yeah.
That was the idea last year, and it didn't do it.
So, you can see the overtime's really kind of, let me go to the other longer range.
One thing I was going to bring up is other airports, I was talking to some of the other airports about their parking, and when they're, when they do their law enforcement there on parking, they actually have the sheriff do that, and he's the one that collects all those fees, which goes into his budget, so...
Yeah.
That'd be something that might help a little bit.
All of the airports...
Because we're sending two out there now, right?
Yeah, the airports fees all do go into the general fund, so they offset sheriff's expenses, you know, as that comes out in the wash. Because of our FAA grants, though, we're kind of dedicated to saying that all revenue at the airport has to go back into the airport, and that's a stipulation from those federal grants that we receive. But I mean, we're so far from being able to take in revenue to pay off the operations that it doesn't matter, it's easy to say that all that money goes back into the airport, and it would be, you know, we'd have to get a lot, lot more to break even, which I don't think will ever happen, but part of, a big part of the increase in the sheriff's budget is those two new deputies, which Steve expects he's going to need to deal with the change in the service response criteria for the airport from going from 15 minutes to five, and so that's really going to take a bite. The other big increase is the equipment, so the two new vehicle leases, plus the equipment that goes with them for those two new deputies, patrol deputies, and also almost $90,000 new radio lease. But as you can see, you know, it's definitely the, since in 2014, overtime was $57,000, almost $58,000, and now, you know, five or six years later, I'm predicting that we'll probably close this year at about $147,000 overtime. So, that's one of the big rising costs.
Is the sheriff's office.
I don't know, another thing to think about in the future is that when we lost our billing company for EMS and search and rescue, search and rescue just quit billing altogether, and so we only get about $28,000 in revenue from the state for those cards, and besides that, there is no search and rescue revenue at all.
How much were they getting prior to not billing?
Um, I'm not sure.
You know, because...
I'd have to look back in time. It's been a while since they billed.
That would be a nice thing.
But I mean, I don't, I don't know if it'd be worth it or not, but that's...
Yeah, maybe a little bit helps.
And, Chris, do you know if those materials from this workshop, that all that they lost?
Um, not for this workshop, I don't think, but for the meetings, yeah.
And the, the long one, do you want?
What's the long one? Uh, no, you don't have to print that, I don't think. I just sent it along in case the council wanted to get into, get into weeds of it, but...
And 127 pages during the meeting?
Well, I just sent the whole budget along, just in case you guys wanted to, because maybe Jane, Jane Lynn likes to get into the details. No? I have it on my computer.
We have it on our computer, that's good.
So, but yeah, you know, we used to have a billing contract for search and rescue, but I don't know, that's a potential revenue stream in the future if we want to pursue it, but...
Why did they determine that they didn't need it?
I don't know, I can't really say for sure. The rationale that I heard was because we were getting revenue through the state for those cards, but that doesn't, that's not much. I'd say it's usually ends up being about $28,000 a year, and the search and rescue budget's more like, you know, $220,000.
You know, it might be worth looking into, because I know in the past, we've looked at, when we were talking about getting revenue for the fire department, fire department can bill insurance companies when they respond to the wrecks, but then it's having the money, you know, having the person that does all that follow-up and such wasn't worth their time, but I'm wondering if there is somebody that billed for both search and rescue and fire department, that it would bring revenue to both.
Maybe.
Worth looking into it.
Need to do something, because the last rescue we had out, out in Ida Goltz by Castle Valley, we had two back-to-back rescues off of, off of the rocks. We had one Thursday, we had one Friday the next day. It was the exact same thing, we had to bring helicopters in from Utah Valley because we needed one with a hoist. So, yeah, I mean, we're talking a lot of money.
But it's having the bandwidth in the office to have someone do that, that's the...
Yeah, I mean, billing is kind of a big deal, which is why we've outsourced it in the past, and it made sense, you know, obviously, when we had EMS, but, you know, that billing company we were using wasn't working out for us, and so we, when we switched over to a different billing company, EMS switched over, but the search and rescue just stopped billing. So anyway, something to think about in the future as a revenue stream, because we've got perhaps one of the most active search and rescue teams in the entire state of Utah.
It is.
And it's almost entirely subsidized by property tax and public money.
If we could get that historical perspective of what it's been, what it's been before.
Yeah.
And it is, last time I looked, it was, it's the most active in the state, even beats Salt Lake County, Los Angeles County.
Hey, Chris, there is one other potential revenue stream coming in with travel council with their activity guide that they sell, or give away rather at the MIC, can sell like interested people who away. There's a QR code in it, or don't make it to search and rescue. I don't know if money's going to come in or not, but...
Well, they do get donations, so that's...
And they're eligible for TRT?
Yeah, and we do send TRT also to them, so, but, you know, the TRT could go into plenty of other things too, so, you know, we don't have enough TRT to go around for all the things that TRT qualifies for. Yeah, I'm not really, it's, it's, it must have been before 2014, this software only goes back to 2014, but I don't see the revenue for it then, so it's got to have been before then. But yeah, we send money to search and rescue and law enforcement, this TRT contribution, $200,000 we send for search and rescue, $2,272,820 for law enforcement, but like I said, there's actually quite a bit more that TRT would qualify for if we had more TRT, we just don't, so I budget to send over as much as we have, or as much as I predict we'll have, and that helps. So, yeah, I don't, do you, does anybody want to go over any of the new position requests or anything else with this budget? We've whittled it down quite a bit from where it was to begin with.
I was, I was really appreciate, appreciated that you had cut it down as much as you did.
And I guess the question is, I mean, it doesn't necessarily hurt to budget to take $150,000 out of the fund balance for a general plan, if you don't spend it, if you do, obviously, it, you know, affects our fund balance, but I don't know if we'll really have the bandwidth to do a general plan update or not. It's a hu, it's a big deal, I went through it once, and it's, it's a big deal.
Election year, it might be something that we won't even do until 2001, I don't know. I would take it out of fund balance.
All right, so that's where it is right now anyways.
Because it's a one-off.
Yeah, so in these contributions, so in total, I'm budgeting $558,623 to come out of fund balance, $322,845 is what I'm calculating to be the, sort of the cushion or the contingency that exists in the budget. Another $75,000, which I kind of predict is new growth in the property tax that we don't really normally budget for, but during a property tax year, I'll kind of throw that in. And I also switched over the two months of council admin training to the fund balance instead of the property tax, and also that $150,000 general plan update. So those are all the things that compose that $558,000 that's budgeted to come out of fund balance, and that's part of what zeros our budget out. So, I mean, we're starting to cut our contingency down pretty close, and a lot of the revenue streams that I've predicted for next year are at exact trends and without being conservative at all, and so if we start to see that the revenues are below what I predicted for the trend, we might have to do a mid-year budget cut. Otherwise, we'll start running in the red because I didn't really budget for much contingency. But I think that that's, you know, a smart thing to do, or at least a, the right thing to do on a year where you're proposing a property tax increase, just so you, you know, you're not creating an inflated need.
So all these departments that requested another employees, I mean, have we gone through and like...
We have, we can do it again, too. I mean, it's, we've gone through all the position requests, every budget workshop that we've had.
And then, not to, sorry, uh, what's that? They're pretty, it's definitely not all the ones that were originally requested, but I was talking about the fund balance before, jumped away from that. Weren't there some big item, sort of studies and things that we're talking about for this year? Like there was a space needs evaluation?
Well, we did, we did that one, but capital facilities plan, different from that for impact fees.
That's budgeted out of the impact B fund for next year.
And that's, yeah, not general fund, that's 2020 because we can't, we wouldn't be billing it until 2020 anyway.
Were there other things like that, that, I felt like there were some things we were trying to squeeze in before the end of the year that would affect the fund balance?
I don't think so. There's going to be, I think there's an expense coming for the UDOT transportation plan before the end of the year. I think it's like a $10,000 contribution or something like that, or maybe more, and that's already budgeted for in the B roads or the road department budget. And then that Arches transportation planning thing, I rolled, you know, I moved that over to next year, I don't think that's happening this year, but that's being paid for by the travel council now. I can't think of any other big... And then there's, there is budgeted a organizational needs assessment, or organizational assessment, that's in there, I think in non-department, or... But for 2019, I think we're pretty much done with anything big, as far as I know. The needs assessment's been paid on, so that's done.
I like it, I think it's in a good spot.
Chris, there were some retirement payouts to be thinking about, I'm not thinking about my own, because it's not much, but those that have been here like 30 years that are...
Yeah.
I don't know if you wanted, you wanted me to remind you about that?
You're just not going to allow them to retire?
That's a good point.
Well, the big one, yeah, there's, there's one fairly sizable one. Well, the big one, yeah, there's, there's one fairly sizable one. If I were to, you know, budget it, usually at the end of the year, when we do our adjustments, even with some of those big payouts. It comes out in the wash because it's pretty rare that the sheriff's office will be fully staffed all the time. And so I didn't really put in the retirement payout into the budget because I felt like there's probably gonna be some positions that go unfilled for part of the year, which will open up, carve out space in that budget for the retirement payout. But if I put it in, I would probably, again, draw it off of fund balance as opposed to factor it into the property tax increase. But, you know, like for instance, this year, I had to make an adjustment in the bu, in the 2019 budget for Jeff Whitney's retirement. But, you know, when it comes out in the wash, it's not as, it wasn't as big a change as what you would think it was. So for...
How does the retirement thing work?
So you can, it's, it's a matter of policy. And so the council is in charge of the policy.
I thought, I thought that they paid into it for their working career.
So it's not, it's not retirement, it's actually the payout for accrued, twenty-five percent of accrued sick leave if you retire.
If you retire.
And, and your vacation, accrued vacation.
Okay, so sick leave and vacation is what it's...
And vacation is maxed out at four weeks, that's the most you can do.
So, you know, so for instance, this is a, for instance, in the building department, we didn't budget for that payout, but we only really had to bump the budget up from four hundred and nine thousand to four hundred and thirteen thousand. So even though it was more than that, just because it kind of ends up coming out in the wash sometimes. And so I'm more concerned about picking those kinds of things up at the end of the year, in the end of the year budget amendment than I am in the beginning of the year. Because, you know, one of the employees that we're talking about has indicated they're gonna retire every year for a long time. And so at some point, I'm sure we will have to pay out their sick leave and vacation. But I don't know if it's really gonna happen or not. And if it does, then I'll, you know, I can, we can always catch it as a, as an end of the year budget amendment.
How much can, can employee roll over here to here?
Uh, they can roll over, what is it, like a hundred and sixty hours you can offer? Yeah, so you can...
It used to be three hundred something.
But yeah, it's, there's a limit to how much you can...
And anything beyond that, they don't use it, they lose it?
Federal government is two hundred and forty hours, so we're lower than federal government.
Military is sixty hours, well, sixty days, sixty days.
Oh, well, sixty days.
Two with months. That's beyond that.
That's a lot.
That's three hundred hours, that's what I was used to, three twenty.
Sixty days, because when I retired from the army, they paid me for two months after I was home.
Alright, so...
I should say you guys made me pay.
Just to reiterate on the new position requests, we've got a reclassification of the council office coordinator to an assistant council administrator. There's the training overlap for council admin. There is a HR assistant approved, a part-time public information officer in the sheriff's department. Two, two patrol deputies, two new corrections deputies. And then a reclassification in attorney's office from paralegal to deputy attorney. And then from deputy attorney to chief deputy attorney. Chrissy actually agreed to reduce her outside deputy services line item to make up for that. So that's kind of ended up being a bit of a wash.
May I interrupt just a moment on this? On your agenda after closed session tonight, there is something about that, but we didn't call it a reclassification of the paralegal. This, this is Renee's work, but she sees the chief deputy attorney as a new position. And the deputy attorney was a revised job description, so I don't know if that needs some work, but...
Well, whatever, so you mean like, I was under the impression that the existing deputy attorney would become a chief, that's not the case?
That's, that is the case.
So that's a reclassification then?
I'm just making it clear compared to what you're saying, so it needs to be cleared up when you make your action items tonight. If it's even appropriate?
Well, I, I guess I...
If we create a new position of chief deputy employee and then we fill it by somebody who's serving a different role, then will that be for vacancy?
Yeah, I just mean, when I say reclassification, I'm just meaning it in the sense that there's no new position being created. The, um, total number of positions are staying the same.
And that's different from what the agenda says, which is all I'm pointing out. So it just needs to be cleared up with the county attorney.
Alright, so yeah, and I guess we, you know, we should make it clear if we approve it that the paralegal position will be eliminated, I guess, if that's what's being proposed. Because that's what's in the budget, that the...
Paralegal is...
That the paralegal, one of the paralegal positions will go away and the, and be replaced by a deputy attorney, a second deputy attorney. And then the deputy attorney will be promoted to a new position, which is the chief deputy.
Which will be the second promotion, second increase.
Yeah. So, you know, the nomenclature, I don't know that it matters so much. But as long as, I guess, we understand what we're doing, we're not changing the number of positions in that department. At OESTA, there's a proposed new maintenance worker, and this is a new position altogether. And then a reclassification from the office administrator to a assistant director of operations. And then, let's see, a part-time assistant in the IT department. And then also in the travel council, switched over their social media person from part-time to full-time.
Where's, where's Mac gonna put another part-time person?
He's got one.
In his dungeon.
In the boiler room!
One other clarification, that as an assistant in OESTA, it'll be assistant director of business.
Oh.
The other assistant director position starting place will be called assistant director of operations.
Oh, okay. Alright, so two assistant directors then.
Yeah.
Why do we have two?
So, can I ask something?
Yeah, go for it, Jaylen.
Well, I guess I feel a little pop heavy, you should need to have two assistant director positions in that department. Anyone else wondering about that?
You're getting some head nods.
Okay. Um, well then. I would like to put that off until we know that that's necessary.
I agree.
I don't know.
I can speak to it a little bit, just that the admin assistant is actually the one bringing in business, a lot of the business there at the arena. And so it's, there's a lot of, I mean, that is the first contact. It's the person who keeps the business going. So, I mean, that was sort of, it's not your typical admin assistant.
Oh, jeez. So I will also say that I cannot hear anybody but Chris. Chris is pretty consistent, Evan's consistent. I heard nothing that Ruth just said. I hear all the laughter, I'm wondering if it's because you're not all speaking into your microphones continually because you cut in and out really badly, so I've missed about half of the meeting.
Oh, sorry, yeah, you're, you're just on Evan's cellphone.
Yeah.
And I don't think that the mics were on, are amplified, are they? So, yeah, these, we're down at the table, Jaylen, and so I'll just, can everybody speak up when they, when they speak? So Ruth's gonna say again what she said.
Hey, Jaylen, so my understanding at the arena is that the admin assistant is doing a lot more than typical admin assistant work. In addition to admin assistant work, it's a position that is the primary contact for all of the rentals and all of the income that's happening at the, at the arena. Not, I mean, not a hundred percent of it, but is the first line of defense and is the one who keeps things going. And so my understanding is that was the idea behind making this an assistant director position. It's not a huge grade increase, I don't think, I can look and see, but...
Well, and that's fine, I would rather adjust the job description than call it a second assistant director. In that size of a department, it just seems a little topic heavy to me.
Right, it would be from grade four to grade seven. You know, so I know you don't have all the grades in front of you, but my, my grade, for example, is twenty-three. So that's at the lower end, obviously. You can title it...
It's not something I'm willing to fall on the sword and die over, but I would like the council to seriously consider that.
Maybe it's a title change?
Yeah, I think we can bring that up in the regular meeting when we're discussing the position.
Title change, or is that what we're looking at? Title change, I don't know.
Your concern was more around the title itself or the level or the grade?
Um, probably more the title.
Yeah, I think when we, during the regular meeting, when we're discussing that, we can get an appropriate title. Was there any titles that you had in mind?
No.
Grand horse stall rental renter?
Operations coordinator, I don't know.
Nice.
Alright, we'll call, we'll, we'll brainstorm at the regular meeting.
Okay, I just thought the purpose of this meeting was to get everything wrapped up so we could do the budget item quickly, so that's why I'm mentioning it here.
Yeah, I appreciate that.
So, right now, it's budgeted at twenty dollars, ten cents an hour, which is about forty-two thousand a year. I didn't bring my step and grade chart. It's probably, I think that's the new one, though, is the old one in the packet too?
But Chris, for the purpose of approving the budget tonight, if, if we had it at the same step and grade as it's proposed now, but were to adjust the title itself, is that something that...
Yeah, I mean, the budget is, is kind of separate from what you approve as far as positions. But obviously, you want them to be sort of copacetic with one another, they have to be synchronous. And so I would just, you know, I'm just wondering if we need to... So it looks like grade seven, step two is what is being proposed to go to, so, yeah. It's in the, it looks like it's budgeted for grade seven, step two. And so you, you guys want me to keep it there, regardless of what you decide to do with the job description?
I feel good with that.
Okay.
May I have the bell outside?
Alright.
Anything else on the positions before we... Do we need a revised edition before, I want to give you time before our regular meeting starts to...
Well, the, the only thing that we've changed about the budget so far is the council's COLA. So is there anything else that's gonna affect the bottom line?
Wait, what did you change?
So you weren't, you hadn't joined in time, Jaylen, but the council members who are present, which are Mary McGann, Gabe White, Greg Holliday, Evan Clapper, and Rory Paxman, can do a consensus about not giving the council the COLA.
Perfect, I like it.
With the understanding that we would recontinue, continue to do it the following year?
Great. So that's, it doesn't save a lot, but...
It saves a public hearing.
Well, too late for that, you're gonna still have to, you can tell everyone you're not gonna do it, but... So...
The other, the only other note is I don't know if there's a way to plug in a revenue for search and rescue. But I wouldn't want to budget for much, but maybe if we had a line item there for a thousand bucks or something, then we could kind of say, hey, we're expecting you to generate revenue.
Uh, well, a thousand, I wouldn't budget for it unless you had something going on. But a thousand dollars is gonna make no difference to the tax issue.
Uh, how would be a good way to, is there a good way to reflect in the budget that we're expecting the billing for searches to come back? Take that away from somebody else, TRT?
Well, we could, we could plug in a revenue for them, I mean, they have a revenue line item in the general fund. But like I said, we... We would have to do a lot of work to get, to get it up and running.
Yeah, okay.
And I don't know historically how much they brought in when they were billing and how much the billing costs were. But this line item right here, this ten thirty-three-ten, is, well, there are a few line items, but down in, I think, designated funds is where we have their donation. Let me see if I can find it. So in their fund balance, they actually have about fifty-one thousand. This is what's saved up over the years that they haven't spent. And then, let's see, how much they normally bring in. It's pretty variable, it kind of just depends on who donates. So it looks like we are budgeting about twenty thousand for donations. We don't really typically hit that mark, it looks like. Over the last three years, we brought in ten thousand, seven fifty-one, then eighteen thousand, one seventy-six, then sixteen thousand, three twenty-eight so far this year. So it's something, and those are just strictly donations.
But that's not necessarily solicited from customers, that's through fundraising events or...
Um, I'm not sure how, I mean, do we, like Ruth says, there's a QR code in our new, what is it, travel guide?
Adventure guide.
And that is an easy way for them, for people to donate to search and rescue. But a lot of the times when somebody gets rescued, they will donate because it's free.
Yeah.
And so, yeah. Alright, so is everybody good with where we're at?
I'm good.
Alright, I'll work up the new bottom line and get our resolution together here.
I will join this budget workshop at three fifty-six and we'll start our regular meeting in less than five minutes. Uh, for Thompson first, after the exciting Thompson Springs fire, special service, special service fire. I know, I didn't realize, I built for the, the building for the Eagles Sports. About that up there?
Yeah.
Yeah, this is... There's some civil stuff.
No, this is the CIB guy that we have to pay for the closing costs.
Do you want it or do you...
Yep.
Do you want a civil thing? Do you want some emotional...
Oh, yeah, I'm recording. Yeah, yeah, yeah. So we'll see who that will be. Two, probably. Two to three. Oh, well, hold on. If they pass the budget or not. One year, we had to meet again between the years, Christmas and New Year's holiday, to get the budget done. And this year is our, is a tax increase year. We haven't had one in 12 years. Or more than 12, 14 years. Oh, gosh. It's hard. It's painful. It does make you really good, though. Officials report since your boss is an elected official. You don't want to. Okay.
All right. That's easy enough. Maybe something's named on this Christmas card. Sure. All right. We always appreciate having you.
Hi, how are you today?
Uh, I just sent a folder. I sent it on Brian's desk. It's... What's the name of that Star Trek thing? The voice com?
When I'm done with the brief administrative report, I'm going to suggest invite someone from this housing committee to give a little overview.
Okay. Jaylen's not interested in telling me action orders.
Oh.
Are we streaming, recording, and such? Okay.
Good afternoon. It is Tuesday, December 17th, 2019. The time is now 4:04. I'd like to call to order the Thompson Springs Special Service Fire District Administrative Control Board regular meeting. Those present are Greg Halliday, Mary McGann, Gabe Boytek, Rory Paxman, Evan Clapper. Any citizens to be heard regarding the Thompson Springs Fire District? Seeing none, we'll move on to approval of minutes. Mary?
I move to approve the minutes for December 3rd, 2019, and authorize the chair to sign all associated documents.
Motion made by Mary McGann, seconded by Greg Halliday. Any discussion? Or call for a roll call vote, Greg Halliday? Oh, sorry. I was, Roy's flashing bills around at me over here. All those in favor of approving the minutes as presented?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Next up is ratification of payment of bills, which were postponed from December 3rd. Rory?
All right. The Grand County bills to be approved for Thompson Springs Fire District, 1217, 2019. Total bills $304.87. Total bills and payroll $838.17.
Motion made by Rory Paxman, seconded by Mary McGann. Discussion? Seeing none, I will now call for a roll call vote. Greg Halliday?
Aye.
Mary McGann?
Yes.
Gabe Boytek?
Yes.
Rory Paxman?
Yes.
Evan Clapper, yes. Motion passes unanimously.
And so just to clarify, my staff who prepares the bills was told when Thompson initiated under the council that she only needed to do the bills once a month. Do you want her to do it more often than that? That's why they weren't there last time. It's just because it wasn't on that cycle, that one month cycle.
And last month was a public hea, I mean, last meeting was a public hearing. It was just unusual.
So...
So the...
Okay. So you're good to go with just once a month on the bills?
Yes.
Okay.
Uh, that brings us to the fire chief's report. Chief Markham.
All right. Incidents since the last meeting, I've only had two. There was a one-car rollover and a I-70 on the 16th of November, and we had a medical cause seizure at the Thompson Exxon. As far as equipment goes, I did receive two used Bendix King handheld radios from the BLM as part of their rule readiness program. I asked for one, they gave me two, so yay. Their radios are generally used for wildland fires, so that'll better enable me to communicate with state and federal resources on wildland fires out there. So thank you, BLM. All apparatus is regularly checked and is fully functional for the winter, so we're good. I'm working on getting quotes for the new, for our new backup generator that died, so I'm working on getting three quotes for that. Other, I think we're going to talk about the fire MOU with the state after this. And then the other big thing we've been, I've been meeting with the Moab Fire Department about is the future of the Thompson Springs Fire Department, what to do with it. At the special county meeting with the fire department, I don't know, a month or so ago, we talked about the option of Moab Valley Fire Department annexing the Thompson Springs Fire Department, which I think is the best idea, as opposed to the Thompson Springs Special Service Water District taking over the fire board, which to me, I have some issues with that. I don't think it's a good idea. If they do take over the board, you have a special service district, and if your one firefighter leaves, what do you got? You got nothing. So I think we need to look at the long term of the big picture and figure out. And I've been in meetings with the chief, where he wanted to be here tonight, but he's in Salt Lake, about how we can make this, this happen. He's special, forming a committee to discuss this more and educate folks on how we can do this and why we want to do it. And I think that's the way to go, so. I talked about that.
Great.
Yeah, ultimately, it's your decision and the water decision, but I just think there's going to be some issues if the water district becomes the fire department.
Well, thank you for that report.
You're welcome.
Uh, and you're all ready for winter in the space?
Yeah. Well, we don't have the backup generator, so power goes down, we may have some issues. But I'll just have to put some propane heaters in there and probably get it back up and running.
Great. It said, we're saying that we're having trouble hearing. Is that everyone or just at the table? Everyone?
Is it...
The amplifier. It's electric. Can you hear us now?
Malcolm?
Any better? No?
Hello?
Uh...
Can you hear us? Okay. I saw a thumbs up.
Okay. We'll talk loud for now. That brings us to new business, action item, approving proposed memorandum of understanding with Utah Department of Natural Resources Division of Forestry Fire and State Lands for Fire Suppression Services outside of district boundaries. Chief Markham?
Yes. So we've had this agreement in place with the state for several years now. It's just a way for, if the department gets called out on a fire that's outside of our district or on state or federal lands, then we can get paid, reimbursed for our costs. And I can be reimbursed going on a fire for, as an EMT, as just a single firefighter or with one of our apparatus. So it's just a way for us to, you know, make a little money on fires for the department. So we have to, so we take less money out of TRT or other sources of funding.
Sounds great. Mary?
I make motion to approve the proposed memorandum of understanding with Utah Department of Natural Resources Division of Forestry Fire and State Lands for the Fire Suppression Services outside of the district's boundary, and authorize the chair to sign all associated documents.
Motion made by Mary McGann, seconded by Rory Paxman. Discussion? Thanks for keeping the ball rolling on this.
Welcome.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Next up, approving the proposed 2020 budget. Chris, this has got your name next to it.
All right. So their 2020 budget hasn't needed to change really from, the 2019 budget is $25,600. They also have a fund balance. I believe you've got an expense for a heater or what was it?
Backup heater.
So, but you've got that in fund balance. So you're, I would say, 2019, you're probably going to close out somewhat under budget. And so I think you're good there. Draw that off the fund balance. Any questions on the Thompson Springs budget?
Nope. It is. Or it's on the dais. It's item C, tentative budget.
And the 2019 budget, we'll just leave the same. There's no need to amend it.
Do we need to have a motion for both?
No, I think you can just approve this resolution that I drafted. It's a, so just to make a motion to approve the resolution adopting the 2020 Thompson Springs Special Service Fire District budget.
For the grand total of $25,600?
Yes.
I would entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second?
Motion made by Greg Halliday, seconded by Mary McGann.
Do we need to read that into the minutes?
What?
The approval.
Oh, well. Did you get it, Ruth?
We got it. We'll get the motion if that's what you're asking.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Motion passes unanimously.
So have to be roll calls if this budget...
Does the budget approval need to be roll call?
Uh, no.
Great. That brings us to old business. Seeing none, future...
I have something. The person who you all designated to take minutes was Brian Ehill, and she has moved away.
Get her back.
I know. I'm dying with that. So, and Tara Collins has been stepping up as much as she can as a part-timer. But anyway, I think you need to designate someone else to do your minutes. I'm just kind of doing it by default, but we can do that on the next agenda if you like. But anyway, just so you know that your minutes are covered for this Thompson Springs Fire Board. Well, I can't remember who is the secretary. They've already delegated it to staff.
But if it's not on the agenda, can we even make a decision tonight?
We'll do it. We'll do it next time. Yeah.
Thanks for that reminder. Mark, that's your cue to figure out this understanding with the fire district.
The Moab Valley. How are you taking minutes, Mark?
I can write curses.
Great. Public hearing, possible action items, seeing none. Any need for a closed session? All right. That brings us to the end of the agenda for the Thompson Springs Special Service Fire District Administrative Control Board. And I will adjourn this meeting at 4:15.
Thank you.
Thank you. Just gonna roll right through on recordings. Why, hello, everyone. It is 4:15 on Tuesday, December 17th, 2019. I'd like to call to order this regularly scheduled meeting of the Grand County Council. And Sonia, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance? Thank you. First up, approval of minutes. We have some from November 13th, November 21st.
Okay, I'll make a motion. I have them right here in front of me. I make a motion to approve the minutes from Wednesday, November 13th, 2019, Wednesday, November 21st, 2019, Tuesday, December 3rd, 2019, Tuesday, December 3rd, 2019, and Friday, December 6th, 2019. and Friday, December sixth, 2019, and authorize the chair to sign all associated documents. Oh, did I get Wednesday, December fourth?
Yeah, I think you said the third twice. You meant the fourth, right?
So, one was the fourth, third, fourth, and one was the third.
So there's also, um...
And December sixth.
There's two sets of minutes on December third, because we had two separate meetings. There's the...
Yeah, there's an F two.
Did you want to approve both of the minutes for the December third? Because there's the regular meeting plus the budget meeting.
I make a motion to approve the budget hearing meeting for December third, 2019, as well as the Tuesday, December third, 2019, regular meeting.
Motion made by Mary McGann, seconded by Rory Paxman. Discussion. Edits, tweaks. Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Next up, ratification of payment of bills.
Don't we have some we have to postpone?
Oh, sorry. I would entertain a motion to postpone those not presented.
Right. I make a motion to postpone October second, October fifteenth, October eighth, October twenty ninth.
Fifteenth's done, but this, October second, eighth, and twenty ninth.
Motion made by Mary McGann, seconded by Rory Paxman. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Next up, ratification of payment of bills. All right. Grand County bills to be approved for, and ratified for twelve, seventeen, 2019, total Total payroll, $236,168.20. Total bills and payroll, $1,560,762.30. Motion made by Rory Paxman. Seconded by Greg Halliday. Any discussion? I'll call for a roll call vote. Greg Halliday?
Aye.
Mary McGann?
Yes.
Gabe Woteck?
Aye.
Rory Paxman?
Yes.
Evan Clapper? Yes. Motion passes unanimously. Next up is council member disclosures. This is just a reminder for council members, for any disclosures that might be pertinent to tonight's meeting. Seeing none, we'll move right along to...
Don't we have, we have the overnight rental. Shall we disclose that?
We do have a hearing this evening.
I thought we had.
Well, I will disclose that then I am a taxpayer, and I do have overnight rentals. I will also disclose that I have a special recreation permit with the B L M, and utilize land associated with the Finns and Things Trail.
I disclose I'm a taxpayer.
And so do I.
Yeah, I'd like to disclose that I am a taxpayer. I have no rentals and no overnight accommodations.
All right, that brings us to general council reports and future considerations. Greg, you want to start us off?
Yep. Okay. The fourteenth, the fourth of December is involved with the administrator interviews. Sixth of December, same thing. Tenth of December was the Conservation District, unfortunately, I missed that. Tenth of December is the Transportation Special Service District. We approved the 2020 final budget. We did an interview and hired Nicole Taylor for the Transportation Special Service District Secretary position, effective one January 2020. We appointed Ashley Wareham to the Transportation Special Service District Board, effective one January 2020.
Excuse me, excuse me, you mean as a recommendation to council?
Yeah.
Because only council can make those appointments. Thank you.
Yep, okay. Eleventh of December, Thompson Special Service District, the reading of the springs, having some problems with that, is significantly less than 100 gallons per minute at the moment. They plan to redevelop some northern spring potential, and there's a significant impact of the prolonged drought. They have hired an engineering company to look at redevelopment of the springs, and that is progressing. They elected Tom Cox as their new chair, effective one January 2020, and they approved their 2020 budget. Using the water board as a supervisory body for the Thompson Fire District was tabled at this time, as there are complications with it. That's all I have.
Mary?
I've had a very busy two weeks. On Thursday, the twelfth, myself and Gabriel attended the Canyon Country Partnership. I made the report as short as I could, succinct as I could. The B O M, Moab, B O M, will have two oil and gas parcels for lease. That'll be two, 393 acres. The Lisbon Gas Plant will be idle for an unknown amount of time. That's in Lisbon Valley. There were one thou, over 1,300 big game animals that received GPS callers to facilitate research, and for boulders, they will like to know that the, they started the construction on the improvement of the takeout beach on Colorado River, and it is expected to be completed on March, early March. The Division of Oil and Gas and Mining reported that Lithium is planning to put in a pilot plant near Dead Horse Point State Park. They have already re-entered some oil wells in the area with intention to do more testing and injecting waste materials into the well. They should also be able to, be, also be talking to the Division of Water Quality. The Division of State Park and Recreation, Dead Horse Point had a very, a good year, not as good as expected because there was such an impact by the low, how many, how, the lower a number of foreign visitations. And for people that go through Blanding, there's a new hole gone at the edge of the Cedars. The Division of Wild Fire, Wildlife, on Highway 191, has reported that the project between Monticello and Blanding will, to give wildlife a way to cross the highway without going across it by going under it and then fencing will be complete, is, will be completed soon, probably is by now. Forest Service, whoops, I just, the hand pumps, they have hand pumps up at Warner Lake, and they put in ten bear boxes. The South Mountain and Medicine Lake Trail projects were finished this summer, allowing for a 10-mile loop open to mountain bikes around the La Salle Pass. The National Park reported that Arches was up, visitation was up 1.9 percent, Canyon lands up 1.5, five eighths percent, Hoben Leaf was down 1.5 percent, as well as Natural Bridges, which was down by 10.37 percent. Arches has added additional parking and have developed the panorama point to, for the night sky visitation. And they have additional radial coverage in the island and the sky, which is not only helping the national parks, it's helping the range, the people who are patrolling Labyrinth Canyon. We met the new San Juan County Administrator, Mac McDonald, and within the next year, they will be opening up the county's general plan and resource management plan for more public comment and a change in direction as to how the county operates. Mac will be reaching out to all to help guide the county as to neighboring agencies' goals and coordinating information for the new commissioners and working closely with northern San Juan. Sitla, within the next year, will open the county's general management plan within it for more public comment and a chance, change in the direction as to how, oops, excuse me. Sitla was, they are working on developing the land next to U S U. They've gotten two bids. Before, when they had, put it out, people just wanted to build motels, hotels, and so they were turned down, and now they're excited because they have some bids for developing housing for the students. U Dot was blasting will continue through December, and they're hoping to start the Moab widening project in January and finish in November of next year. I will skip that and go on and on and on, but that's pretty much a lot that was talked about in, at the Canyon Country Partnership. John Curtis's office did propose some work to, for broadband expansion to schools in San Juan County and beyond to the residents, and we're hoping that that happens. Tuesday, the fifth, I attended the Grand Water Sewer Agency, and they passed their budgets and discussed well improvement. I don't know if I'll be continuing on that, but that is a very well-run meeting. They, I was really impressed with how they had things organized. On Monday, the ninth, I attended a census meeting. The census, they were, are hiring people for the census, and if you go online, you should be able to apply if you'd like. At the travel council, they approved a $10,000 donation to Art Trails and a $9,500 donation to the rodeo. They're not really donations, they're grants, right? Okay. Grants, people apply for grants. They interviewed applicants for open boards, and UAC is creating a tourism committee, and they're looking at helping create pickleball courts in Moab for anybody that plays pickleball. That'd be fun. On Wednesday, there was a Mel Creek Community Coordinative Meeting. They divided Mel Creek into three sections, front country, middle country, and back country. There's, they've set up criteria for protecting the resources and the users' use of all those areas. It's moving along really nicely, and hopefully we can start having public meetings and public comments soon. I've attended the transient authority meeting on Wednesday, the eleventh, and they're discussing becoming a more formal committee that is passed through resolution, and they're continuing to work with creating rail service to Moab, and they're working with the Giants by Dead Horse Point. Solid Waste Special Service District amended, passed their budgets and new fee schedule. And U S U, I attended that this morning, has raised $9 million. They only need $10 million. They're waiting to hear back from a couple grants. So that's really exciting news, that they will have, they could, you know, the building will continue even at 9 million, but to get the building that we've been wanting, we need a million dollars more. They will be breaking ground this spring, and it should be completed the fall of 2021. So it was a very busy two weeks.
Attended a council administrator interviews on the December fourth and sixth. Also attended the Canyon Country Partnership with councilperson McGann. She did a great job describing the contents of that meeting, and also completed on December thirteenth my councilperson orientation with Administrator Dylan.
Thanks for that. Oh, mine's pretty short, too. I've got some good news. You know, we've been trying to hire somebody out at the airport for the airport director, and we started with over 60 applicants. We narrowed it down to three, and then we chose Andy Solsovic, who will be starting December 30th. He's accepted the job offer, and will be starting then. It's going to be a great thing. He's going to come to the next council to introduce himself, which will be on the January seventh council, so. Great, which, he'll be starting sooner than we thought, so it's good. Even better. Excellent. I met with the EMS Special Service District. I think some of the, the takeaways that were most pertinent for this body is that they are moving on with the building design process. They're hoping to get some drawings for next month, and so hopefully we'll have a R F P for a proposal for approval for the building authority on January 21st. So drawings first, and then we'll, we'll try to get a proposal out. With Trail Mix, we presented the building that they'd be sharing with Sand Flats. People were excited about that, and there's still a lot of discussion around what will happen when the e-bike determination that we weighed in on comes from the B L M, and kind of how to manage that in the meantime, and how to plan for any potential changes once they come online. Also met with Cemetery Special Service District. It was, their budget was up for approval, and a thing that was there is there's a historic cemetery in Castle Tin, so not the Castle Valley Cemetery, but a little, yeah, a little further up the road, there's a historic cemetery there that the cemetery district has a road right-of-way for, and every 30 years it needs renewal or whatever, but there, the county also has a right-of-way there, and so there's some questions of whether the cemetery should go through that process of renewing that right-of-way with the B L M, or whether that's just, if they can piggyback off the counties. And I told them that I wasn't the guy to answer those questions, and so I'll look for some answers. Please.
That particular road out there, besides crossing B L M land, it also crosses some private land, so they're going to have to talk with those private landlords, too.
I think the Cemetery's Board's kind of initial feeling was that if the county had a right-of-way, that that would preserve any kind of access that they would need, but I just know that I didn't want it to get 30 years from now and this discussion to be forgotten, and I didn't know if we needed some kind of agreement with the county and the cemetery district, or if... The folks at the B L M made it sound like it wasn't a big deal, but we've had other kind of handshake agreements from 50 years ago that kind of flared up, and we're being told we've been doing it wrong the whole time, so it might be worth getting something in writing. That's all I have from the Cemetery Board. In regards to all these council administrator interviews, we did select a candidate. I don't know if that's my announcement to make, or if that's stealing somebody's thunder, but, okay, all right. Then that's all I've got. That brings us to elected officials reports.
So I do want to report on 2020 elections. Besides the normal primary in June, we're going to also be having a presidential primary, which is, I'm going to force us to run three elections next year, so I just wanted everybody to realize that we're going to have two primaries next year, the presidential primary and then the regular primary. The presidential primary is a little bit different from the regular primary. The Democratic Party is completely open to anybody who wants to vote, and the Republican Party primary ballot is closed to Republicans. However, if you're not a registered Republican or a registered Democrat, we're going to be sending out a letter to everybody who's not a registered Republican or Democrat requesting a response if you would like one of those ballots. And so you're going to have to respond in order to participate in the Democrat or Republican primary, presidential primary, if you're not a registered Republican or Democrat. So it's a little confusing, and I just wanted everybody to know that there are going to be two primaries next year, in addition to the general election.
Question?
Yeah.
If you respond to that, and you're not either a Republican or a Democrat, you still stay as an independent or what?
So the way I think that the... So for the presidential primary, anybody can vote and request a Democrat ballot. However, if you want a Republican ballot, you're going to have to register as a Republican.
Okay, thank you.
Is that it?
Yes.
Any other elected officials? Seeing none, council administrator report?
Yes, just briefly, thank you, Councilmember Paxman, for announcing about the Airport Director. I'm excited about that hire, and I will be introducing him to the public at the first council meeting in January. Let's see, I was able to hold an orientation for Councilmember Voite recently. It's three hours, and it included Councilmember McGann, thank you again. Councilmember Halliday popped in for a little bit, and our county attorney also popped in, so hopefully, it was useful and get you a little bit of an overview. Other than that, I would like to turn a little bit of time over to our Change Your Form of Government Study Committee member Walt Dabney, to just give the public and you all an overview of what's happening, because you've seen an email and in your inboxes this latest.
Good afternoon, Council. My name is Walt Dabney, and I am one of the seven members of the Change Your County Government Study Committee that you authorized, the voters approved, and you authorized going to ballot and the voters approved. How was your nominee to that committee? It's been an interesting journey. I want to really thank Ruth and Ruth for being part of this on every meeting. She was great, and Chris Barrett spent a lot of time with us as well. We got a three-month late start in doing this, so we didn't get started until March the 8th. So we worked pretty diligently for nine months. There was lawsuits that had to be settled. We worked diligently for nine months. We tried to get our product, the optional plan, on the ballot for this last November. The time didn't allow us to get it to the county attorney with enough time for her to review it, and if there were any changes that needed to be made, to also get it on the ballot. There were some changes she recommended, and we have fixed those. A couple of them are pretty interesting. One of them, or two of them, were simply changing a word or two to change the meaning on something. One had to do with the removal of the county executive, and that needed to be as prescribed, or actually, the council as prescribed by state law and not by judicial review. Another one was simply a date. We established a date for an election, and the county administrator said we couldn't do that. The interesting...
County attorney.
County attorney said we couldn't do that. The interesting one that she said we had no authority to do, we were kind of excited about. The people that responded to the survey during this period considered districts, considered all at large, and considered a combination of districts at and at large, which is what we have currently. It was close. There was only 16 people that wanted, that said they preferred all districts, which means you could have voted for one member up here. There were 101 that responded that said they would like all at large, which meant you would vote for all five members, and 117 that said they would like some kind of a combination. That's not a huge difference. If you add the two that didn't want the combinations, it's exactly the same number as the ones that wanted the combination. So we liked that, especially since somebody in one of our open houses suggested, okay, let's do the combination of the two, but let's make it two districts, not three out of the five that we recommended, and let's have a rural, which would be the county outside of Moab City, and the city is the two districts, so that some of the issues that might more reflect the county interest outside of the city itself might be addressed. We were told we could not do that. We had even the maps drawn, and we got a really interesting consultant on the phone with his ability with the computer up there on the wall to actually take the census records and move voting populations around, not playing any games with how anybody votes or where they're registered. We didn't know any of that. So we had a rural and urban that was pretty much all Moab City and pretty much all the rest of the county. We weren't able to do that. So the discussion when we came back in was, instead of just leaving that up in the air, it was pretty evenly supported by the people that talked to us during this process, and so we went with all at large, which means that anybody voting votes for all five of the members in our thing. Our recommendation, we went back to the drawing board, redid the optional plan, and last Friday, Friday the 13th, we unanimously voted, the six of us that were here unanimously voted, to move forward both the recommendations and report to the council, which Ruth has right there, the recommendations and report of the history of what we did, what the process and steps were that we did and that kind of thing. And then the optional plan was a second document that was also voted to move forward unanimously to the county attorney and the county clerk and to the council, which I hope that you now have. With the exception of some public meetings that we're going to have to explain to the voters in another probably open house situation, so they can ask us, why did you do this and why did you do that? Our work is pretty much done. It will now go to the voters next November, the 20th, and that vote will be, do you accept the recommendations in this optional plan? The recommendations in this optional plan are for five-member council, not a commission. Five-person council with an appointed manager. And Ruth has gotten on me for nine months now about calling them managers or administrators. It's the manager. And that person would be selected by the county council and would have the executive responsibilities where the council will have the legislative responsibilities. It will be five at-large members voted. The first year, it would be voted on, if it's approved by the voters in 2020, it'll be two years before the new members are voted on. And at that time, three of those members will be elected for four-year terms, and two of those members will be elected for two-year terms. If...
In the beginning.
In the beginning, only in the beginning. After that, it'd be a staggered for and their four-year term. If the voters decide they do not like what we have put forward as our recommendation, considering four forms of government, one is the one we picked, the other would be that same county council with an elected administrator, elected manager. Elected manager. I almost have to take her home with me. She's got to keep me... And the other would be a county commission or an expanded county commission, where the commissioners have both the executive and the legislative responsibility. With that, I would be willing to answer any questions. It's been an interesting ride. I will tell you that I didn't know how this was going to go. The seven of us that were on this study committee truly, in my estimation, represent the full spectrum of political ideas and feelings about all kinds of things. And in nine months, I never had a, I never experienced a moment of ugliness that from any of this group. If somebody had something to say, they got to say the whole thing. We talked it all through. We listened to everybody, and when we voted, we voted and moved on. And in most cases, the votes were either unanimous or majority, and certainly, what came to you was the unanimous recommendation forward that goes to you and the voters to vote. And if the county attorney doesn't have any problem with it, I guess it's up to Chris to put it on the ballot and take it to the voters.
Nine months, that baby was born.
That's right.
Merritt?
I'm not sure if I understood you, but if, after it gets on the ballot, my understanding is if the public votes not for the plan that's recommended by the study group, we default to a three-person commission. Is that correct?
That is correct. That is correct. Not a five or anything else, no county manager unless the county commission decided they wanted one.
Wanted an administrator.
Wanted an administrator, but there wouldn't be a manager that had the executive responsibilities. That would be entirely in the legislative party.
And there's no transition plan in state code for how to suddenly be a three-person commission, and it's not in the purview of the study committee to deal with that, so it's...
And most of us don't want to deal with it. We think this is a good recommendation.
Any other questions for the council?
Yes.
Go ahead.
So if this gets on the ballot in November 2020, then we would elect people in 2021 or when?
2022.
2022.
It's always even numbered for county.
All even numbered for that.
Okay, so then...
They would take office in '23.
Okay, so, all right. So we had seven people on the council, and the voters said go to five. Then at 2023, somebody would have to leave?
No.
No?
Everyone would have to...
Everyone.
Everyone.
It's a new, it's a new deal.
Unless you run for office and get elected.
Yeah, okay.
But everybody will have to, no one, no one is automatically on the new...
So, yeah, the, there's four regular council seats up for election next year, and if...
Regular ones.
And so there's the council District One that Gabe's appointed to for this year, but for next year, it's going to be an elected position filling that, but that's just the remainder of the two years left on that term. But the others are going to, their normal four-year term will be cut short by two years.
It's a thorough plan.
It was actually very interesting and mostly fun to do. Thanks again to you guys.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. That brings us to department reports. We have a report from the Audit Committee slash Risk Manager Report. Renee Baker.
Hello. I got to meet with the Audit Committee on December 6th, and we talked about the requirement to post the fraud hotline. I have since posted it on my section of the county website under the Risk Management tab and sent it out to all of the county employees, which will be a regular thing. I'll send it out probably quarterly at least, and any other communications, I feel like it can be worked in. And then also, they are directed in the break room and then on the bulletin boards out in the county building of where to go to for that information. So for the Audit Committee, that's what they requested me to do as the Risk Manager.
Curtis was going to report on the rest of what the Audit Committee's doing, but he's not here tonight, so I will. We sent out some bids for internal auditor, and we sent out to three to five, four people. We got two bids, only two bids back that were under what we had budgeted $10,000. And later on tonight, we will vote on whether or not to waiver the purchasing policy required for three bids, since we only got two. Once we do that, we will do that before the end of the year electronically, or before January the 7th, we will start, decide, meet, and decide of the two which would be the best auditor.
Just don't vote electronically.
No, I didn't mean electronically. That's on his report. Okay, we can't vote. So we'll have a meeting before the 7th. So it's moving forward. We'll have internal controls.
Thank you. Thank you.
Great, thanks. Any questions from the council? Appreciate you guys wrestling with that. Next up, agency reports. Seeing none, we'll move on to citizens to be heard. This is the portion of the meeting for citizens to speak on an item that is not on the agenda. If you would like to speak on an agenda item, there's some cards by the door that you could fill out your name and the agenda item at the top. Any citizens to be heard for an item not on the agenda? Seeing none, now lead to presentations. Rory?
I'd like to move item K in front of J. Make a recommendation.
Motion to address item K next, made by Rory Paxman, seconded by Mary McGann. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passed unanimously. So that brings us to presentation of recognizing employees' years of service from all the department heads, elected officials, council administrator, and Renee Baker. Do you want to get us started, Renee?
Yeah.
Thanks.
So we like to take the end of the year to recognize everybody who's put in five, 10, 15, 20, and beyond years of service. So we have a few today to recognize with a PIN and a certificate, and I'll invite their supervisor, if they're here, to come up and speak a little bit if they wish. So I will start, just going through the five years first. First up, I have Colby Burgess, who's with our Road Department. He was here. Hi, Colby.
Thank you. For your service. Still popping up, you know? Hey.
I could see a word or two about this young man. So I really appreciate Colby, and he came to the Road Department, and he's grown so much in his skills, in his mechanic skills, in his abilities. I've got to give a heads up to Cody for kind of a mentor, and also the other two mechanics, Earl and Jason, they really helped him out a lot. And I really appreciate his growth as he continues on, and I appreciate that very much. Really what I appreciate, too, is his confidence, and he's really built that up. He's go out and do some things out there, and I really wish you out there. So he's really stepped it up, and I appreciate it a lot.
All right, next up with the five-year is Sean Fugit. And Ruth is his supervisor. I'll let Ruth speak a little bit.
Sweet. Congratulations. So in your study committee report, where in the optional plan, the recommendation report, it says he's only been here four months, but that's because at that point, he was only an actual supervisor for four months. So he stayed, he started with the county in the facilities department, maintenance department, and has worked his way up. In no time, he is supervising, is it five now? Four? How many people?
Oh, four.
Four people. He's done a great job. He's shown himself. He's got a lot of smarts, and takes care of emergency roof repairs and so forth. So anyway, thank you, and congratulations.
All right, next up in the five-year is Sonia Nicolason with Sand Flats, and Andrea Brant, her supervisor.
Oh, gosh, where would I be without you? So Sonia's worked at Sand Flats for five years, and she has been just so important as a team member out there controlling our trails by mountain bike, the Socrate Trail and the Floraicore Trail, and she cares so much. So he's such a caring person. She cares not only about the land and the plants, and the visitors and streetlights at Sand Flats. And this year, she was so helpful in helping write the 50 Years of Socrate documentary film, helping with that, helping with the filming schedule and appearing. film, helping with that, helping with the filming schedule and appearing in the film as well. And previous to that, she really helped us out by creating the Plants of the High Desert book that is for sale at Back of the Yon at Horns Point State Park in Moab, Maine. And points from the purchase of that book go back to San Flats to help with redevelopment efforts, which is something that is very near and dear to Sonia's heart. So thank you, Sonia.
Okay, other mentions in the five years who weren't able to be here tonight with us are Rick Bailey from the Sheriff's Office, Brendan Black, and Josh Honor from the Sheriff's Office, and Jacob Suter, who's done search and rescue. So then I'll move on to 10 years. Tonight, we have Matt Sinistros.
Oh, I don't get a pin?
No.
Get all this way from...
I'll get you one, I promise.
Oh, I'm sure.
I'll make it bigger than all these ones. Okay.
So Matt came on board, obviously, 10 years ago, actually in November, and I did not get to hire him, but he has just been a real godsend. He was the county's first IT real employee. He's stuck with us through thick and thin, keeps us current. We're going to be going through some more current things to say, you know, in the 21st century. But the thing that I want you to know most about Matt is that he just was always there for us through every, everything that he's been through. I appreciate you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations.
And then our other mention in the 10 years is Brenda Wyatt with our Senior Center. I don't think Brenda was able to come tonight, so we'll tuck that away. I also have Paul Collins and Tom Schellenberger, who are in the 10-year from search and rescue. Okay, 15 years, we've got John Marshall, and he is a search and rescue employee as well, who's not here tonight. But moving on to 20 years, first up, we've got Joel Engelbrecht.
What's your name?
Okay, he's from San Flats, and Andrea Brant is his supervisor.
He's not around tonight, but, um, tell him, yeah. It's just because, you know, San Flats is a very small staff, and so everybody kind of wears, you know, two or three hats, so, um, very inexperienced, so everybody goes on to San Flats. So we appreciate all of this time you're there.
Thank you, Andrea. Next up in 20 years, we have Robert Ribira. Did I say it right, Robert?
Yep.
From Travel Council. What do you mean?
Congratulations. Robert, I don't know if you noticed, but Robert has, does all the graphic design for the Travel Council. Everything that we do, ads, the new billboard we installed south of town, he does everything in-house. You do not have to send anything out for creative, so he is a real asset to the county. I feel very honored and privileged to work with him. I've only worked with him for almost nine years, but we hit it off when we first started working together because he's from Buffalo and I'm from Pittsburgh. It was a horrible game the other night. But, but I really appreciate all he does, and again, our county is so lucky to have him on board. He's a great team player. We have three new employees in our office, and he really works with everyone, so again, congratulations on a well-deserved board.
Okay, last up in our 20 years is Debbie Swayze. Debbie is our assessor, and I know her ladies are here to say thank you to her. Swayze, don't be shy.
We're good cheer.
Thanks, Debbie. All right, and then the last in the 20 years, who also isn't here tonight, is Eve Brannan. She is the Administrative Assistant over in the Sheriff's Office. So this last one is a little contested, means they'll have to do some research, but Bill's up for his 30 years for service to the county. He's our road supervisor.
Wow. Well, this is incredible. I didn't get to hire Bill 30 years, but I would have in a heartbeat. So Bill, he's always chasing after grant money and always getting it, whether it's for the Jackson Street detention or the Salute Road. He is all about like improvement. Naturally, he's in charge of all of our county D and E roads, as well as our bridges that are over a certain size and our stormwater, and so he's got a lot of responsibilities. Other than the Sheriff's Office, I believe he runs about, probably the biggest department of full-time staff, definitely. So he just is one of those jewels, and so I am pleased to be able to supervise him, and he lets me supervise him.
Yeah.
So that's all I have for years of service awards. I just want to say thank you to all Grand County employees for being here.
Thank you. It's hard to do it justice. With that, we'll jump back to item J, presentation on the County Seat TV show, season 10, 2020. Chad Booth, the County Seat.
I don't know whether to stand or sit.
Your choice.
Well, I sat three hours and 40 minutes to get here, and I'm going to sit three hours and 40 minutes to go back, so I think I'll stand. We just, with new council members that, in relative nature to our 10 years of producing County Seat, I, you were around back then when we started, so there are some familiar faces there. County Seat is a program that airs on ABC4, and it is a program that is designed to be an advocate for counties, in particular rural counties, so that their issues can be discussed, understood, and presented along the Wasatch Front. Most of the legislative actions that happen at the state legislature are voted upon by a vast majority of representatives and also because of court ruling senators that are population-weighted, which means that if you can't get accurate information and good long-form discussions about county issues onto the Wasatch Front, you're sitting at a disadvantage when the legislature's in session and they get crazy ideas about unfunded mandates. County Seat is kind of an open architecture structure, not wanting to confuse any IT statements or anything, but the reason that we've done this is that small counties need to be able to bring issues forward. When you support the county seat, because it is a private program, it has to be funded, and it costs quite a bit. And some people say, well, where's the value in County Seat and providing this program? And some will say, well, Jesus, ads go, I can probably buy ads cheaper. But you can't buy the service cheaper because it doesn't exist. Several years ago, in one of our early seasons, Senator Ralph Okerlin, from the center part of the state, who had formerly been a county-elected official, said that from his perspective, he said, "This program is worth a million dollars." I actually talked to Channel 4 earlier this year about perhaps having them take over the county seat and run it as one of their own programs, thinking there may be some cost savings there, and I've included their bid. And so Ralph was actually wrong. This program is worth $2 million, because that's about what it would take to do 52 episodes if the TV station were producing it. You would also lose some of the autonomy that happens. Grand County has been involved in our program and on issues dating back to before you actually were a sponsor. When it was appropriate, you know, Audrey Graham used to contact us all the time, even though the county wasn't actually participating in the program, and we had her on multiple occasions. Elizabeth Tubbs has been on the program, Curtis Wells has been on the program, and all of them have brought issues to our attention that need to be discussed. And the value of doing this is, is that if, if there's a problem and people are coming to the Grand County Council and saying, "Why aren't you guys managing this, you know, this county better?" Well, if you've got Millard County having the same problem that you're having, and Emery County is having the same problem you're having, and Utah County is having the same problem, now all of a sudden, there's a different level of discussion, and it allows us to focus on the issues. The tool is as good as those who will participate in it, and so if you were to become involved, we send up weekly updates, and we ask for counties to participate and give us suggestions of issues that need to be talked about. Some of the things will affect and impact your county whether or not you're involved. As an example, our show this week is on the shortage of emergency medical services volunteers, and the fact that the state is in a precarious spot of having a significant shortage and not having a way to get the volunteer base in rural Utah that's necessary to, you know, properly staff emergency medical services. And so this is an issue that we ferreted out in a half-hour conversation about what should happen, what could happen, how the state should participate in it. It was a very good dialogue, and it would be some, obviously, it was something that hit right at home during the course of your meeting just today. We talked about the shortage of sheriff's deputies a few weeks ago. We have talked about centrally-assessed taxes and tax reform, and in the original House Bill 441 that came up last year, rural counties with the proposed changes in that bill to sales taxes and shifting so much of the burden of reducing sales tax and increasing sales tax on services, rural counties would have had, would have had a real challenge with that, and we feel that we were instrumental in that conversation to get that delayed and waylaid. So the importance of this, you know, people ask about the audience. I'll take a minute to address that, and then I want to leave some time for some questions. You know, it doesn't matter if I'm at the Trading Post in Monizuma Creek or at the post office slash general store in Grouse Creek up in Box Elder County, this program is watched. Now, granted, this is not Dancing with the Stars, so it's not the biggest audience, but it was never intended to be. I mean, we could make it that audience by, you know, talking about how one of the council members ran away with the treasure and they're in Acapulco living off of county funds, and that would get a lot of people to watch. But it would defeat the purpose of what a long-form conversation is. You can't get this conversation that we do on County Seat anywhere else, because if you were to put it in print and publish it in the newspaper, it'd be a six-page spread. It would be several radio interviews, the longest talk radio interviews across the state usually run about eight, eight and a half minutes. We sit down and talk for 25 minutes about one single topic so that we can get into the details of it. Sometimes there's controversy between counties. In those cases, we encourage both of them to come so we can get a perspective on it. It's a tool for people to use, and we would like to invite you guys to come back to the table and help us support it, help us get the message out. You're on, memo went out today, and you were on the question mark list. You weren't on the no list, you weren't on the yes list, but you were on the question mark list, so. With that, any comments or questions from the peanut gallery? We actually have a former commissioner that has some experience. Yes, Mayor?
Five years ago, when I first got on the council, we were going through a really contentious process, Public Lands Initiative, and in that process, one of the things that was contentious was Hay Joe Canyon. And it was reported on, but when it was reported on, it was only one, one side of the issue was presented. And the majority of the council at that time were on the other side, and I felt like it was not representing what our county wanted, what we believed in, and it was after that year that we chose out of being on, because we felt like it wasn't being presented, because Grand County is different from the rest of the state. But it was presented in a way that made us, you know, it didn't present it in the way that we were comfortable with, so that's why we chose out.
Okay. I don't recall that, as we talked about that issue, did, did the county, did members of the county that had a different point of view come forward? Because that's, you know, if, if there's a different point of view or an opinion, we will put it into the mix.
Well, I guess that's part of reporting, is to, to look and see if there is another side to the issue. Myself, I wasn't even aware that that issue was going to be discussed at that point on it. I might have missed an email, something might have happened, but I wasn't aware of it, or I would have been happy, or people would have been happy, but it wasn't, we weren't. The reporter did not reach out to find out if there was another point of view.
So let me, let me explain the process of the County Seat. We put out a weekly bulletin that talks about things that have come onto the radar about what, what people want us to talk about, and we keep a running tally, and we send them to all council members and commissioners and other elected officials to let them know what we are about to talk about. I, I can't control the open rate on that, but when people respond from different areas and they say, "This would be a good issue, I want to participate in it," we make sure that they have some participation in that program, and that, that point of view can be discussed either in the story or in the, in the discussion part, but we're a very small staff, and part of the reason maybe Channel 4 was telling you that it would cost $463,000 per broadcast quarter is the fact that they would staff it differently than we're able to. We are three people, and we have to put 52 shows together each year, and that's, that is a big task, and we deliver it for under $14,000, including the broadcast airtime. So as far as getting a message out broadly on these issues, we, we do it on a shoestring, and that, that requires some engagement with the counties. But there's another side of the engagement, and, and perhaps Commissioner Ellerton, or former Commissioner Ellerton, who's here, who knows County Seat from being engaged as a county commissioner, we're also very open to comments and suggestions. And if there's an issue that's coming up in your county, and you feel it's not being fully understood, that's the time for the county to say, "Hey, have you thought about doing a show about this?" When you call and make that statement, then we go, "Let's put this on the list and get comments from people and see who this is an issue on." We just aired an episode in September, I think it was, it may have been late August, and it relates to a conversation you already had today briefly, and it was the issue of public right-of-ways across private property and, and how counties deal with longstanding right-of-ways that cross sections of private property. Well, when we, that was first brought to our attention by Millard County, and we put it into the system. And by the time it got to the system, Toilla County says, "Yeah, we got problems with that." Iron County said, "Yeah, we've got problems with that." By the time we put the show together, all of their problems were different, but we had a half-hour conversation that allowed us to ferret it out and talk about it in detail, and quite frankly, all three of the counties came away themselves with a better understanding, as did that portion of the audience that is in the legislature, is running state agencies, are the community leaders, the people that create conversation. You know, Summit County has a profile that's very similar to yours, and they've been participating in the program for two years, and particularly in their efforts of sustainable energy development, development, everything, and they've had plenty of opportunity, and they're very happy with the program, and they're among the ranks of yes, we are, for this year. So it's something to consider. I hope that answered your question.
Any other questions from the council? Well, we're currently, later on the agenda, we have a very extensive budget to approve.
I'm aware of that. I wanted to get my licks in before it happened, Evan.
Right.
So I appreciate, I appreciate the opportunity to present. I, I think it's an excellent opportunity. I'll just give you a side note. I used to do a program called PM Magazine. I was in.
Well, we're currently, later on the agenda, we have a very extensive budget to approve.
I'm aware of that. I wanted to get my licks in before it happened, Evan.
Great.
So, I appreciate, I appreciate the opportunity to present. I, I think it's an excellent opportunity. I'll just give you a side note. I used to do a program called PM Magazine. I was in Elaine, Pennsylvania, of all places, about halfway between Pittsburgh and Buffalo, in the Scranton-Wilkes-Barre area, northeast part of the state. Our program was extremely popular at that point. I'm not saying that to pat myself on the back, but, and this would be something that Elaine might understand, our program had a 24 rating and a 34 share, which means that a quarter of the households that existed in that geographic boundary were tuned into our program five nights a week. The only reason that I mention that is that I know what that kind of engagement feels with the public. When you're the face of that program, and you're out and about, the kinds of engagement you get. County Seat is probably very underestimated, because I, I just don't go places in rural Utah, and even along the Los Esch front, where I don't have people talk about this program. Actually, almo- almost more than our recreation show. So, you know, we are, we are getting that conversation out, and I think it's, I think it's very important. And I think we have set out and achieved what we had originally intended. It's a tool, it's here for the counties to use, and we would like to have, have you join us. So, with that, I'll finish my presentation. Chris, this is your copy.
Thanks for making the trip down.
You bet.
Just stick around.
I'm going to prove until I know it's gonna be midnight, so.
Well, no, no, I meant in our meeting, I just meant, go out to eat, you know, spend some money.
Spend some TRT money, TRCC funds.
That brings us to the general business action items. Discussing, oh, would you like to call Councilmember Hox? First up is item L, approving proposed resolution amending the 2019 budget. For auditor, Mr. Baird.
We were before, but, coming at it. Go ahead, Chris. She was having trouble.
All right. So, the, this agenda item pertains to amending the 2019 budget. And the amendment hasn't changed much since our last public hearing, but I'll just review some of the changes to these funds. The general fund will increase by $45,229. 911 emergency funds will increase by $10,873. Class B roads fund will increase by $39,178. Our restaurant and car tax fund will decrease by $22,403. The travel council will decrease by $27,018. Miscellaneous grants will go down by $60,000. The TRT mitigation portion of the budget will go down by $215,843. And so, hit some of the other more significant ones. The debt service on the building authority will go up $343,267, and that's a rollover for the Jackson Street Phase One project from last year. And road capital projects will go up $33,313. Healthcare sales tax will go up $253,398. Also increased the emergency medical services fund by $717,236, and that's to reflect the total payout to the new service district. Also reduced the airports capital projects fund by $7,175,542, and that's because we moved the new, the two new taxiway and apron expansion projects to next year. And so, that really covers most of the big changes. Anybody have any questions on the 2019 amendment? On your dais is Exhibit A, which is the most updated version, exhibit to the resolution amending the 2019 budget.
I move to approve the resolution amending the 2019 budget and authorize the chair to sign all associated documents.
Motion to amend the 2019 budget made by Gabe Wojtek, seconded by Mary McGann. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Jay Lynn?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. I did, thank you. Oh, sorry. All those opposed? Motion passes, one, two, three, four, five, to one, with Paxman in opposition. Is that enough for the count?
Yep.
Great. That brings us to item M, approving proposed resolution adopting the 2020 budget. Chris Baird.
All right. So, we had a budget workshop earlier. And the only, and so, just to kind of cut, I guess, to the bottom line with regard to the proposed property tax increase, as it stands right now, the general funds, property tax revenue would go up by $1,349,506. It was originally noticed at $2,111,000, and so that's a decrease of $761,494 from what was originally noticed. The library's property tax increase would be $231,310, and it was originally noticed at $275,400, and so that's $44,090 less than noticed. The impact to a property tax bill with a value of $242,000, for residential, that would amount to $111.61 more per year. And for commercial, $202.93 more per year. And so, with that, it's not associated with square footage, it's only associated with value.
Excuse me, I didn't, I didn't hear that.
Say that again.
I didn't hear what you just said.
Ruth asked about square footage, but the, we don't calculate based on square footage, we only calculate based on value. And so, it's the average value of a parcel in Grand County. And Chris Coffin and I calculated that using all the values in the county. And so, $242,000 is the average value of a parcel in Grand County. And so, the, if it's a primary residence, it's taxed at 55% of its assessed value. And commercial is taxed at 100% of its assessed value. And so, that's why there's a difference between the commercial property tax bill and the primary residential property tax bill. Does anybody have any questions about this budget? Not much has changed since the public hearing, but there are a few things that have made some significant differences. I caught an error in the sheriff's budget where the search and rescue salaries were being calculated too high, so I fixed that. And I also moved $150,000 general plan update from the property tax increase over to a draw off the general fund balance. Made some adjustments also to some expenses that were coming from the general fund or the TRCC fund, and moved those over into the travel council fund. And so, that helped out a little also with the property tax increase. And those are the main changes reflected since our public hearing. And those were also approved in our meeting earlier today, our workshop. And also, the council asked me to remove the COLA, the cost of living adjustment for council members, which saved about $4,200.
Mary?
I move to approve the resolution adopting the 2020 budget and associate a TC 800C resolution approving the property tax increase for 2020, and authorize the chair to sign all associated documents.
Second.
Motion to approve the resolution adopting the 2020 budget made by Mary McGann, seconded by Gabe Wojtek. Discussion?
Does this have to be like when we approved the budget? Does it have to be roll call?
Uh, no. I mean, I, the only reason a, a roll call vote is sometimes called out is either because it's a matter of policy, like, for instance, well, actually, since we have a vote, a, a person on the phone, we should probably do roll call vote for every single vote, according to our policy.
All right.
And so, you know, and I guess that's for the purposes of the person on the phone. But I always record how each individual council member votes in the minutes, so.
And Evan always repeats it, so in my opinion, we're complying with the roll. I just saw the As on resolutions, that's why I'm not confused.
All right. But for the, for tonight, we'll go for a roll call vote on approving the resolution adopting the 2020 budget and associated TC 800C resolution. Greg Halliday?
Aye.
Mary McGann?
Yes.
Gabe Wojtek?
Aye.
Rory Paxman?
No.
Jay Lynn Hawks?
Yes.
Evan Clapper? Yes. Motion passes five to one. Well, we just did the roll call with Rory Paxman in opposition. Jay Lynn, is it possible to mute your phone until you're voting? Thank you.
Yes, that's possible. Hey, let me see, I'm not hearing anything except you, Evan.
Sorry.
Is there any way to kind of?
Uh, we can try to.
Phone around or something?
Yeah, we can try to pass the phone around. We tried calling on the other thing in the Verizon, blocked us, so.
Okay.
All right, we will pass it on.
Okay, I'm muting.
Okay. We are moving on to item N, approving 2020 grade and step chart with impact of 2020 cost of living adjustment, COLA at 1.7%. Renee Baker?
All right. So, within the budget, it was, it was calling for 1.7 cost of living adjustment for the employees on the grade and step chart. By approving this chart, you would be approving the authorization to use the chart for all my purposes and for employees' purposes.
Mine's not showing up in my pack. Here. Page 22, I'm on it.
Yeah.
Well, I, for some reason, on my, my table contents, I go from I to JJ. And it didn't do that when I was studying.
It's because they're alphabetical, and so, like, the double letters are thrown it off, because we have such an agenda. But, yeah, it's after Z for some reason. But, yeah.
So, yeah, the gist of it is that the entire step and grade chart went up 1.7%.
Yeah, and this.
This was confusing me a lot.
It was just being able to pull it up quickly. It was in the packet, put out last week, reviewed by all of us.
So, yeah, the way that we, that we do COLAs, which is easiest for us, is we have grade and step, and, and so, we just increase the entire grade and step chart. Everybody remains in their, you know, appropriate grade and step, but the whole chart shifts up by the amount that we approve the COLA. And so, that's how we do it. And then, if this is approved, then next year, we'll revise that in our accounting software, and it will reflect that in all the employees' grade and step salaries and wages. And so.
So, the new base, the grade one, step one, is $14.81.
That's right. Up from $14.56. So, that's essentially the county's minimum wage. And there's really no positions at that level, except, I think, high school apprentice or something like that. But, that's how that works. And so, there's a 3% difference between steps and a 5% difference between grades.
Mary?
I move to approve the 2020 grade and step chart as presented in the 2020 budget and authorize the chair to sign all associated documents.
Second.
Motion to approve the 2020 grade and step chart as presented. Motion made by Mary McGann, seconded by Gabe Wojtek for the electronic participation. We'll stick with the roll call vote. Greg Halliday?
Nay.
Mary McGann?
Yes.
Gabe Wojtek?
Aye.
Rory Paxman?
Aye.
Jay Lynn Hawks?
Yes.
Evan Clapper? Yes. Motion passes five to one, with Halliday in opposition. That brings us to item O, approving proposed job description for new positions.
Okay. So, Matt asked me to pull the IT specialist. We want to rework that job description just a little bit more before bringing it to council at the next meeting. So, for the new position, all I have is the sheriff's office social media and PR specialist, which is a part-time position, and it was in the 2020 budget. It was started at a grade six, and they are currently using a volunteer to do this work. That doesn't allow for a lot of stability for this person to continually post and update on all the sheriff's office social media. So, they're asking for a part-time position.
Mary?
I move to approve the proposed job description for the following new posi- oh, sheriff's office social media and public relationship specialist. And I'm dropping the IT specialist. Effective 1/1/2020, and authorize the chair to sign all associated documents.
I'll second.
Motion made by Mary McGann, seconded by Gabe Wojtek. It looks like I might have lost Jay Lynn. So, I lost Jay Lynn at 5:34. Greg Halliday?
Aye.
Mary McGann?
Yes.
Gabe Wojtek?
Aye.
Rory Paxman?
Yes.
Evan Clapper? Yes. Motion passes unanimously. That brings us to, do we need a motion to postpone approving a IT job description?
Most likely.
Motion?
I move to postpone the IT position and authorize the chair to sign all associated documents.
Second.
Motion made by Mary McGann, seconded by Gabe Wojtek. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion to postpone passes unanimously. Next up is item P, approving proposed job description for reclassifications of positions.
So, for the one reclassification that we have in the 2020 budget would be for the OSA assistant, OSA administrative assistant, move to an OSA assistant director of business, handling the reservations and more of the business side of it. Move that up to a grade seven, and eliminate the position at the grade four.
Just that there was discussion at the budget workshop to maybe retitle it to something like operations coordinator. And I will add to that, that our, our council office coordinator is a grade seven. So, that kind of fits. So. Yeah.
Sorry.
Do you have a microphone, Ellen?
Uh. I don't have a microphone for that, so. Thanks, I appreciate that.
So, I'll make the motion, I guess, and then we can discuss it if we want to discuss the change of the name, or do we want to discuss it before?
Uh, we could have the motion reflect the change of name, would be.
And what was the name of the?
Operations coordinator. Was, was suggested, I think, by someone.
Yeah, but the other assistant. Yeah, but the other Assistant Directors, Assistant Director of Operations, so this would be a Business Coordinator, wouldn't it?
Business Coordinator would work, oh yeah, that would be better.
Mary?
I move to approve the reclassified and updated job description for the OSTA Business, uh-
Coordinator.
Coordinator, uh, effective 1/1/2020 at a grade seven, and eliminate the current Assi- uh, Administrative Assistance Position at a grade four, and authorize the chair to sign all associated documents.
Second?
Motion made by Mary McGann, seconded by Gabe Voytek, discussion. When your discussions with Steve, it, uh, it sounds like the council's opinion is to not have too many managers in the top heavy out there.
Okay.
Is there, do you know what, if he would, uh, oppose this change?
I don't think he would oppose it. It is moving her up to where we want her to be, um, and still allows her to do all of the, the business side of it, so check it out.
And if we were going to have one assistant manager out there, do you, would you guess it'd be better to have the Operations Assistant Manager or a Business Operation?
The Operations.
Okay. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion passes four to one with Paxman in opposition.
Okay, see you all later.
Thank you. Next up is item Q, approving proposed amendment on airport hangar lease for ownership change from Chuck Henderson to H&amp;L LLC at Canyonlands Field Airport.
So, I just, can I interrupt? Just sorry. So, um, Renee, did, uh, did we put on here, and I know it's not a new job description, but did we put on the approval of the two positions for Corrections and the two for Patrol?
No, we were going to put those on the next agenda.
Oh, okay.
Um, as well as-
Okay. Sounds good. Sorry about that. I just wanted to make sure we're not skipping over. Okay, sorry, Evan.
All you, Tammy.
All me, huh? Alright. Um, so this is an amendment to a lease from, I believe it's 2016. Um, this was a, um, it was a purchase of ownership of the H&amp;L Hangar, it's the Hangar and something LLC of Canyonlands Field. Chuck Henderson was the owner, Keith, and, um, his brother Clint purchased it, um, and I guess what happened is, is the, um, in the contract itself, uh, the, in the H&amp;L LLC, the officers of that didn't get changed from Chuck Henderson to the Macbeth brothers, so this is just an, that amendment to that contract. All, everything else in the lease will stay the same.
Thanks for that.
Just follow. Yeah, that's what I do.
Okay, I'll make a motion. Rory?
Uh, I approve the proposed amendment on the airport hangar lease for ownership change for Chuck Henderson, um, to H&amp;L LLC at Canyonlands Field, um, and, um, ask, um, for the chair's signature on all associated documents.
Motion made by Rory Paxman?
Second.
Seconded by Greg Halliday, discussion? Any further questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Next up is item R, rescinding motion of November 19th and approving contract award for airport engineering services for Canyonlands Field Airport to Armstrong Consultants of Grand Junction, Colorado through December 31st, 2024. Ruth, will you talk us through this?
Yes, I will do my best. Um, so, first of all, Armstrong Consultants are here, if you have any questions for them. Um, what, what you all had, uh, motioned before was for staff to amend the request for qualifications to include minimum standards and put it back out. Uh, there was concern that the process perhaps had not been followed, uh, to, for the, for the fact that we only received one proposal for engineering services for the airport and one proposal for planning services at the airport. In the packet, you'll see that there were, uh, I believe, six, uh, different firms who did reach out and we did submit the, the, uh, request for qualification so that they could respond in plenty of time. Also, our, our chairman of the airport board is here, Bill Groff, and he, uh, supplied an email in your packet stating that he also talked to additional three firms at a conference he attended to let them know, uh, about the request for qualification. So, the word is definitely out there. Uh, we did get the one, uh, each from Armstrong Consultants. So, tonight's motion would be to, uh, consider approving awards to Armstrong Consultants. Their, uh, five-year contract as airport engineer and planner of record expires January 6th, I believe, of this coming year, so it's coming up. Um, so what else? The other piece is just rescinding the motion so that we're basically undoing the motion. I do want to explain about the minimum standards, that's very important. Um, they did not qualify for federal funding, and the RFQ, or the, the response to the request for qualifications is only for federal-funded projects through the FAA, uh, so that wouldn't have worked anyway. So, we didn't do any of that. Um, we did our homework and learned these things, and in the meantime, the Minimum Standards draft, uh, with the help of the county attorney, have been sent to, uh, the Airplane Owners and Operators Association, and they are reviewing it for free. They are also willing, I believe, to provide a quote for their legal services. Their team is in Washington DC. The legal services would be in Utah, and those would be attorneys that are specific to aviation, but we don't have a dollar quote on that. And that, none of this is in the budget for paying someone to, uh, completely start over with min- with, uh, minimum standards. The quote from Armstrong has been somewhere like $30,000 to $50,000, not for them to do it, but just for firms that specialize in minimum standards to write it. Uh, our former airport director was trying to save the county that much money by taking, uh, various minimum standards from other airports in Utah, compiling them together, working with the airport board, getting red line of them, um, and then also running it through the county attorney. So, we have a decent draft that we think is, uh, 85% done. Well, I don't know about decent, that's not my call. We do have a, a sizable draft, put it that way. Uh, and maybe it's not 85% done. That was our former airport director's thought about it. So, uh, that, and that is really separate from this motion, other than the rescinding part of the motion. So, we've got-
I believe we have a request to address the council on this agenda item. Bill Groff from the airport board. So, uh, could you come, uh, to the microphone and introduce yourself?
So, on the minimum standards, I took, uh, the document that, uh, the county attorney rejected, the one that we, I, I believe is the one we sent to AOPA, and, uh-
We sent the original draft that had gone to the county attorney, and then she sent her draft with her red lines of it.
Right. So, I, I also sent the one, the red line one to all the, the, uh, board members, and, uh, Mr. Holly has went through and re, redone everything. Uh, he thinks that he's done everything that you objected to, so I, I can give you a copy of that if you would like, and, uh, we can go from there, so.
And Mr. Holly is a board member-
He's a board member.
-and a civil engineer from back in the day?
He is.
Okay. And also, our new airport director is also looking at it, and he brings 20 years of experience. You'll get to meet him next time, but he's also looking at it.
Can you relax, because that was fast, and I had provided that, my red line minutes in July, and then nothing happened with them, so I appreciate, I should have brought them straight to you.
Of course you should.
Uh-
I move to rescind the motion of November 19th, 2019, that directed staff to revise the request for qualifications to include minimum standards and to re-advertise in order to now approve the contract award for airport engineering services for Canyonlands Field Airport to Armstrong Consultants of Grand Junction, Colorado through December 31st, 2024, and authorize the chair to sign all associated documents.
Motion made by Gabe Voytek, seconded by Rory Paxman, discussion? Any other questions for Tammy, the board, administrator, the attorney?
Just that we have two motions. Uh, one is for engineering services, and one is for planning services.
Uh-
Coming up.
Great. Thanks for that clarification. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Next up is item S, rescinding motion of November 19th, 2019, and approving contract award for airport planning services for Canyonlands Field Airport to Armstrong Consultants of Grand Junction, Colorado through December 31st, 2024. Is that a ditto on the presentation?
It is, sorry. Thank you.
Alright.
I move to rescind the motion of November 19th, 2019, that directed staff to revise the request for qualifications RFQ to include minimum standards and to re-advertise in order to now approve the contract award for airport planning services for the Canyonlands Field Airport to Armstrong Consultants of Grand Junction, Colorado through December 31st, 2024, and authorize the chair to sign all associated documents.
Motion made by Mary McGann, seconded by Rory Paxman, discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you much. Thank you, gentlemen. Look forward to working with you more. Uh, next up is item T, approving the scenic view in development agreement. Zachariah?
Okay, so typically, uh, the county council does not see, um, site plan applications for review because they are administrative approvals, uh, but in this instance, uh, the county negotiated a development agreement with the developer for off-site improvements. Uh, in this case, the off-site improvements, uh, include a portion of a planned frontage road, uh, between Mesa and San Jose, uh, adjacent to, uh, US 191. Uh, we'll be doing more planning for this road in the regional transportation planning effort with UDOT in the next year, uh, but because the development agreement is a contractual agreement between a developer and the county, uh, the county council has to approve it. So, what this development agreement says is that the developer acknowledges they are responsible for, uh, constructing, or in this case, bonding for their, um, frontage portion of this, uh, frontage road. So, uh, that's in effect what this development agreement is, uh, communicating and memorializing, and, uh, the applicant and, well, the developer has already agreed to its terms and submitted the, um, performance bond to the county. Uh, the development agreement was, uh, written and edited by the county attorney and myself, and, uh, so it's, again, fairly routine.
Fairly routine.
Rory?
Um, I move to approve the scenic view in development agreement and authorize the chair to sign all associated documents.
Motion made by Rory Paxman, seconded by Greg Halliday, discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Next up, item U, adopting proposed ordinance applying the high-density housing overlay District 5 designation to the parcels located at 3827 and 3859 Spanish Valley Drive, and approving the associated Tierra Fuego master plan and development agreement. Zachariah?
Okay, so at the last county council meeting, you held a public hearing to review the Tierra Fuego High Density Housing Overlay Development Application. This includes the request to designate the referenced parcels as, um, part of the High Density Housing Overlay District 5, um, and to approve the Tierra Fuego Master Plan and Development Agreement. We have not received any public comments since December 3rd and would recommend approval. The county, uh, Planning Commission also forwarded a favorable recommendation, this is for, uh, a 10-lot subdivision across two, uh, one-acre parcels, uh, in Spanish Valley Drive, so, um, you have the ordinance in your packet, and it's ready for approval.
Mary?
I move to adopt the proposed ordinance as applying the High Density Housing, uh, Overlay District 5 designation to the parcel located at 3827 and 3859 Spanish Valley Drive, and approve the associate, uh, Tierra-
Fuego.
Fuego, uh, Master Plan and Development Agreement, and authorize the chair to sign all associated documents.
Motion made by Mary McGann, seconded by Gabe Voytek, discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Next up, item B, adopting a proposed ordinance amending the Grand County ordinances to include Title 17, Use of Public Lands. Andrea Brand? Sheriff White? Sheriff White?
No sheriff today.
No sheriff today.
You guys do have a revised copy on the diocesan. Do you have one additional change you want to make?
Oh, I see it. The, oh.
Do you want to give any hope or review, Andrea, before we cover the changes?
Um, well, just, uh, you may recall from last time that, um, uh, the sheriff and, um, the BLM and, uh, also the state worked, we all worked together on this, and Sam Plots worked together on, uh, creating this, this ordinance with Christina, and, um, it's to, to make it so that all entities are able to tick it in the same way, for the same things that the BLM can tick it for, so it'll really help, uh, the whole county as, as a whole, um, and make it a better experience for, for our users, for our visitors, for the public citizens and, um, the environment. So, um, the only, uh, so what happened between the last, uh, two weeks, we, we didn't receive any comments-
No public comment.
For either, for this ordinance, and, um, so, just a few, uh, updates were made. Some were typos that were caught afterwards, and, uh, some involved, um, adding the e-bikes to, to this, and, um, so there's just one, uh, correction that's, that's a typo that, uh, needs to be changed, um, in the passage of this, um, and that is under, uh, Chapter 1703 Camping and Parking, under Campfires, letter D says Burnwood Pellets, and it should be Burnwood Pallets. So, that is the only change that is missing from what you have before you.
Oh, pellets is too long.
Yeah.
Typo. Well, I really thought it was supposed to be pellets, but Andrea just showed me right now. The BLM rag that it is pellets.
Ooh.
So, I-
Cutting news.
Indeed. Um, Jalen-
Did you get that in the county seat?
Sure.
Sorry. I was excited. I thought viewers would want to see it. Sorry, continue.
Jalen brought up a few things, and the reason why some things are redlined and some things are in yellow are the changes that are in yellow were in response to Jalen's concern. So, under the purpose provision, we made the assistance of law enforcement officers more general, includes local, state, and federal law enforcement officers. Um, she had, uh, she wanted to see a distinction, which I think was appropriate, between, um, camping outside of camp sites and designated campground versus dispersed camping areas, so we made that change. And there was originally a provision, you'll see it's been deleted in 17.07.040, that was trying to get off, or get at cross-country foot travel, but I talked that over with Rich Lloyd, the lead BLM law enforcement officer today, and he said, hey, look, everything, everything that's BLM and state in the county, you're allowed to be on trail. There's no designated trail versus non-designated trail. All cross-country foot travel is legal, as long as there's no destruction or other nuisance, et cetera, which you can, you know, ticket or prosecute under other things. So we deleted that for the concern. And then e-bikes was something that Trail Mix and also the Sand Flat Stewardship Committee brought up, and just since our last public hearing. I also worked with Tony White of State Parks and Rich Lloyd at the BLM to get that to a place where they felt comfortable, since the regs are changing at the state and federal level on e-bikes, and they're, it's not quite firmed up yet. And so you'll see that we added a definition of bicycle and electric-assisted bicycle, and those are consistent with a vehicle code under state law. And then that's in 17.07.040. And, you know, the main provision is no person shall operate an e-bike on a trail posted or designated for non-motorized use unless specifically permitted by state or federal regulation. So right now, they are not, but it's a moving target, and maybe, so... We're talking about our federal land, state federal land, so we can't restrict something locally that is allowed at the federal level. So we are, we're stuck with what they decide to do in the future, to some extent. Nope. We need it.
Yes, we definitely need it, and it's great that all the different entities have come together and support this happening, so...
Mary?
I move to adopt an ordinance amending the Grand County ordinance to include Title 17, Use of Public Lands, and authorize the chair to sign all associated documents.
Motion made by Mary McGann, seconded by Roy Paxman, discussion? So I may be naive here and refresh my memory. Title 17, is that just referring to the section of code? Or where does the...
Yeah, so we actually have some codified Grand County ordinances that we haven't used well, and we haven't updated them well, but that's a goal of mine and Chris's, is to start, because our ordinances just get lost, and they're amended, and they're rescinded, and we don't even use them, we don't even know what they are, and so it is a goal to start now, working into these codified ordinances that are separate from Randy's ordinances, bring that up to speed. So you'll start seeing that now more and more.
The title.
Title.
Well, so, yeah, we should, you know, anything that's a legislative act, that's a law, really should be codified into, and numbered, as Christina's done, and so...
Apparently we don't have a 17. This is a new title.
Yeah, it's a, it's a new title.
Thanks for that. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? All those spacing out? Is that a aye?
No, I was spacing out.
Sorry. Motion passes unanimously.
I was looking at the next agenda item, I'm sorry.
Oh, moving right along, I like it. That brings us to item W, adopting a proposed ordinance designating one-way travel on Fins and Things 4x4 Trail, daytime only use restrictions on the southern 2.5 miles of Fins and Things 4x4 Trail located in the Sand Flats Recreation Area, and amending 121240 to include roads within property of the BLM. Thank you.
Thank you. It's long.
It just, Bureau of Land Management just came out of my mouth, it's BLM, I didn't mean to, anyway.
So as I explained last time, it came before you two weeks ago, back in 2015, this went through a federal process, and the BLM designated the trail, the southern part of the trail, the 2.5 miles, southern part of the Fins and Things Trail, it's a 10-mile trail almost, as one-way, and closed from half hour before sunset to half hour after sunrise, limited is the proper terminology. And the reason for this was because of safety concerns in our campgrounds, it passes through two campgrounds, it goes nearby another campground now, we have changed that last winter, used to pass right through it, campground E. And so this went through a public process back in 2015, we haven't had any problems from that way, people are in support of this, these limits, but we still are having people go illegally, according to the BLM regulations at this time, on this section of trail. So what this will do is, again, it will make it so that all the different entities, state and the county sheriff, can go along these same regulations as the BLM. So that's the purpose of the ordinance.
Great.
And we didn't receive any comments either.
Okay.
I move to adopt a proposed ordinance designating one-way travel on Fins and Things 4x4 Trail, daytime only use restrictions on the southern 2.5 miles of Fins and Things 4x4 Trail located in Sand Flats Recreation Area, and amending 12.12.040 to include roads within property of the Bureau of Land Management, and authorize the chair to sign all associated documents.
Motion made by Gabe Boytek, seconded by Mary McGann, discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Next, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thanks, Christina.
I know, that was not easy. Thank you for your efforts. Item X, adopting a proposed ordinance replacing reserve Title 11. Here we are, seeing them already.
There you go.
Title 11 of the Grand County codified ordinances with Title 11 noise.
This, you have this on the dais because there were some very minor changes, just corrections in formatting, nothing to highlight, honestly, it hasn't substantially changed. We do not currently have a noise ordinance, we need one. This will slide into reserve Title 11, so we don't have Title 11 as of now. It creates, it defines excessive noise, as excessive it's here defined, but that is something that you can't do anytime. And then it sets that apart from loud noise, which you can't do during restricted hours, which are essentially nighttime hours, those do change in the summer months versus winter months, and there's numerous exceptions, including agricultural activities, hunting activities, and certain construction activities, although you still need to be operating within the restricted hours.
Thanks for that.
No public comments on this either.
Greg?
I'd like to make a motion to adopt the proposed ordinance replacing reserve Title 11 of the Grand County codified ordinances with Title 11 noise, and authorize the chair to sign all associated documents.
Motion made by Greg Halliday, seconded by Mary McGann, discussion? I think it's long overdue, I like it. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion passes four to one with Paxman in opposition. Next up is item Y, approving a letter of support for Manti LaSalle National Forest Planning Staff in Support of the Moab Geographic Area. Councilmember McGann?
Yes, this is, this process has been going on for a long time, and Zachariah has been very involved with it, and other members of our planning board and members of Castle Valley. And this letter is to support the protection of our watership. And with that being said, I will make a motion. I move to approve the support letter to the Manti LaSalle National Forest Planning Staff and authorize the chair to sign all associated documents.
Second?
Motion made by Mary McGann, seconded by Gabe Boytek. We did receive some citizen comments.
Oh, it was, yeah.
Mary O'Brien, if you would like to introduce herself?
Yeah. Chris, could you piece this around?
They were on an email attachment today, correct?
I did.
Okay.
But I sent it so late, I...
No, it's fine. Tara was looking for a copy, and I was just saying.
I would have been surprised if all of you saw it, so... So when I, when I learned that Mary was going to be introducing a letter on the Moab geographic area, I thought I would just put it in a larger context, because this is a very long process to get the new Manti LaSalle National Forest Plan Revision. It's a 34-year-old plan, it was made in 1986, so what I wanted to do in just a couple minutes is go through all the pieces up above the line, then the black pieces below, and last, the two orange pieces. So this actually started in 2016 with the first public workshop, introducing that a plan revision was going to be underway. Then in September of this year, all cooperating agencies, which of course includes Grand County, received an initial proposal by the forests as to what they were thinking about the plan. The public hasn't seen that. So in, by schedule now, mid-January, the public will get to see. It may be a little bit tweaked from county comments since September, or it may be exactly the same, don't know. That'll be released to the public. And then, not until the mid-2020, will there be, what, a draft environmental impact statement that would have more than one alternative to look at. And then finally, sometime, maybe in 2020, or maybe 2021, you're looking at the final environmental impact statement. So what happens with those dates? After August, there have been various public workshops, commenting periods, cooperating agency meetings, that is input into the original-like proposal to do the plan revision. Then since September 23, 2019, there have been any of the cooperating agencies and tribes putting in comments on what was this non-public draft. Then in mid-January, as I said, this will be the first time the public sees this kind of cooperating agency draft, and will have 60 days, and that's when the cooperating agencies will also be commenting, and tribes, and everyone. And then there will be a period of comment when the draft EIS comes out. When the draft EIS comes out, there'll be comments both on the various alternatives, what different groups think are good elements, and so on, also comments on the comparison that the Forest Service has made of the different alternatives for their varying environmental and social consequences, okay? And then, last of all, to look at these orange things, I put the Grand County Council letter today where it is in this whole process, so that it was clear that you're sending a letter about one small piece of a large complicated plan, which includes every activity that happens on the forest for the next 15 years, and this is a letter just on the provisions for the Moab geographic area. Of course, there's all kinds of sections on archaeology, and recreation, and transportation, and wilderness, and timber activities, and grazing, and on and on. So it's a complicated plan, your letter is speaking to a one piece. And then one other thing that may be a little novel to you, because it is rather novel, but not unheard of, in about a week after the Forest Service draft for comment comes out in mid-January, there's going to be a conservation group alternative that's submitted that we are hoping, it's a number of groups, will be one of the alternatives that then appears in the draft EIS later in 2020. And you think, well, why, this is a non-agency alternative? That is allowed under the NEPA, National Environmental Policy Act, regulations, and it's not, it's not the first time. A number of groups and tribes put in an alternative years ago on the complete Hell's Canyon National Recreation Area Comprehensive Management Plan. That was published as an alternative, and also Willawa County, which is in Oregon, because Hell's Canyon is on the stratos Oregon and Idaho, also had an alternative in there. So that's all, if you have any questions, that's fine, that's fine. I'm, I'm, I just wanted to place where this item Y is in a large, kind of, many-years process.
Last, I believe it was September, maybe Zachariah will remember, but all the county council got an invitation, because you need to sign in and to get to pull down the draft where we pulled up the section, the altern, you know, that you see in your packet, because it's so large, they just didn't send it to everyone. But Gabriel, if you're interested, I'll get ahold of the person and make sure you get that invitation. If you're interested and you forgot to respond when you were given the invitation, I believe it was in September, maybe it was even earlier, and you can't find that email and you wish to download the whole document so you can review not just the area around Moab, but the entire process, and you can't find it and you want it resent to you, let me know through email, and I will get that to you.
Thanks for that. Have we had a motion on the table?
Yeah. Didn't we have, did we have another comment?
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion passes four to one with Paxman in opposition. Next up is the consent agenda. Item Z, approving 2020 annual meeting schedule for the county council. Item AA, approving proposed expenditure for bike skills park features from the sole-source provider of this product, Progressive Bike Ramps funded by Moab City. Item BB, approving the chair's signature on a cooperative agreement between the Grand County and Utah Department of Natural Resources, Division of Wildlife Resources, aka Grand County Mill Creek 4037 Agreement to control Ravina grass, spotted knaffweed, and other weeds concerned with the BLM, bring their land in the amount of $4,800 provided by UDWR through August 31, 2020. Item CC, ratifying the vice-chair's signature on a letter of support to Southeastern Utah Association of Local Governments for grant money for harmless substance use treatment. Item DD, approving the 2020 beer tax plan. Item EE, approving purchase of a printer for the recorder's office in the amount of $12,664.40 plus tax from Les Olson Company, a state contract. And item FF, waiving the purchasing policy requirement for three telephone bids for contracting with one of two submitted bids for a risk management auditor for internal controls at under $10,000 within budget. Mary?
I move to approve the consent agenda items as read, and authorize the chair to sign all associated documents.
Motion made by Mary McGann, seconded by Roy Paxman, any discussion?
Discussion.
Please.
Why are we paying tax for the printer?
Purchasers?
What'd you say?
Uh, why are we paying tax on a printer for the recorder?
Yeah, yeah, the printer we're buying for the recorder's office, why are we paying tax on it? Says plus tax.
Oh. Is that the amount, plus tax? So, so there is no tax?
There is no tax.
No. So it's fine, that is the dollar amount. Plus tax of zero.
Okay. Do we need to clarify that?
Good catch, though.
Need to clarify that for the record?
So it's, it's not uncommon that we get invoices with tax on.
So, it's not uncommon that we get invoices with tax on, and we get ahold of whoever and give them our tax exempt ID numbers.
Because that would be a substantial tax.
But it's not there.
So, we don't need to pay that?
Yeah, we don't.
Do we need those notes in the motion? Or will that be followed up?
Is it, I don't see.
Right.
No, because it happens all the time, and we deal with it all the time.
Any further discussion? All those in favor of approving the consent agenda?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. That brings us to GG, calendar items and public notices. That's rude.
Yay, since Bryony's not here. Okay. All I have for December and January are fun things called holidays for Christmas and New Year's Day, and also Martin Luther King holiday. And I'm going to be off just one day, December 23rd. Other than that, the Form of Government Study Committee is not going to meet this Friday because they got done what they needed to get done. They do have a non-regularly scheduled meeting for January 31st, in anticipation that the county attorney would have her 45 days of review this second round. And that is 45 days exactly, so. Sounds like Greg has something?
Correction. The Museum of Moab meeting scheduled for tomorrow will not be held tomorrow, it was held on the 4th of this month, so that's a correction to the calendar. Thank you.
I want to say the local emergency planning commission committee has already, was already met too, and it won't be meeting tomorrow.
Did they cancel that?
Or, maybe I'm wrong, I just...
No, that...
That is the correct date?
As far as I know.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, never mind, neither did.
I've just hoped that it hasn't been canceled, and they haven't told me.
No, it hasn't. Any other December or January changes? Just know that these are still not completely filled out, because we are working with all the different boards, commissions, and committees to find out for sure if they're keeping their same dates for 2020 for their meetings, or if they're changing them, there will be an announcement in the paper on those dates in early January. Moving along, employment opportunities, we have Deputy Recorder One for a position that closes January 3rd, and open until filled, the Sheriff's Office Food Services Assistant Manager. That's about five years, I think, that's waiting to be filled.
We should get into a little diploma. Five years of vacancy.
It is. It makes me wonder if it's really needed.
And you all did bring that up to the sheriff, and he did still want to keep it running, so. Special events, January 16th, Dead Horse Ultra, the 20th, this is not a special event per se, it's just a FYI, National Parks Fee-Free Day. On the 25th is the Arches Ultra Trail Race, and then on the 29th, another FYI is Trash and Show at Woody's. That's all I've got.
Trash and Show at Woody's. Put it on your calendar.
Aren't you? Solid waste special district, come on.
You gotta start working on your outfit.
Represent.
That's why it's on the calendar.
All right, thank you for that. That brings us to public hearings. This is item HH, a public hearing to solicit public comment on a proposed ordinance amending overnight accommodations development standards. Zachariah, you want to get us started?
Sure.
Thanks.
I've invited Mila Dumbereruna. Mila's our community and economic development specialist, if you haven't met her yet. So, tonight we have a public hearing to solicit written oral comments on the proposed ordinance in front of you, which would amend the development standards for overnight accommodations. So, this ordinance is the product of Resolution 3180, which was a pending ordinance resolution that notified developers that the county was reviewing and would likely amend its development standards for overnight accommodations. And it set in place a 180-day timeline in which you could adopt those proposed amendments. What that means is that anybody who submits an application to the county for an overnight accommodations development during that time period could be held to the new standards if adopted within that 180-day period. If an application was submitted, and the county did not adopt new standards, then they would be held to the standards that were in place at the time the temporary land use ordinance was enacted. So, the Planning Commission has voted to recommend the draft ordinance. I will note that while there isn't language in the draft ordinance related to, quote-unquote, eligibility districts, the Planning Commission did include in their vote a recommendation to establish eligibility districts that were essentially coterminous with the overnight accommodations overlay boundaries that were adopted as part of Ordinance 595. So, that basically is all of the existing invested projects in Grand County, plus handful parcels in the areas of Crescent Junction, Thompson Springs, and Cisco. I will note that that does not follow the straw poll vote that you all conducted on December 3rd, and does not follow staff's recommendations either, but that was part of the Planning Commission recommendation. I would say that staff's recommendation is to approve the ordinance in large part. There are some minor changes that I think we need to consider prior to a vote on this ordinance, and I'll go through those in a minute. So, you'll see in the packet a redlined version of the draft ordinance, as well as a clean version. Even the clean version has a handful of comments included in it still, but that is to give you and the public the ability to see what the proposed changes are in that redlined Lastly, I would say that while this isn't going to call for any action tonight, or on January 7th, when you would have a regular council meeting scheduled to vote on this, I have included in your packet a table of the, well, a portion of the use table that shows which zones various commercial uses are allowed in, and I think that it's important that we quickly re-examine that table to reintegrate some of the commercial uses that are not currently permitted in many of our commercial zones back into the use table. You know, the point there being that if your goal is to enable diversification of the economy, restricting some uses is part of that equation, but another part of that equation is making sure that the other uses you want to occur are actually permissible. You know, the last part of that is actually facilitating some of those diversified developments via incentives, and we are working on that, but just to give you some context for why that table is included in the packet. So, any questions before I go through the draft ordinance? Okay. So, you'll recognize some of the whereas statements in this draft ordinance from Ordinance 595. Not all of them are there, but the ones that are relevant to this ordinance and the amendment to the standards are included. Some additional whereas statements are also in there, so I would encourage you to read through those so that you understand the justification for adopting these. You may want to read some of those into the record, but I'll leave that up to you and the county attorney. So, you'll see in Section 3.2.3, we had several use-specific standards related to overnight accommodations. Those standards have been integrated into Section 4.6, which is the overnight accommodations overlay section. So, that is the purpose for moving those.
4.6, did you say?
Yeah, 4.6 is the overnight accommodations overlay district section. So, we decided to move, or recommend moving the use-specific standards associated with lodging into that section, so that everyone who was looking for lodging-related standards could find them all in one location. Okay. The Planning Commission has recommended some new language in the purpose section of Section 4.6, so that's all in redline again. And even though this was not really part of the discussion of standards over the last six months, the Planning Commission is still quite interested in communicating to you their thoughts on, you know, what principles, or even objective standards you should be looking at for guidance in determining whether or not to apply an overlay designation to a specific parcel or parcels. So, you know, staff actually didn't have a whole lot of time to review this, because it was recommended last week, prior to the Planning Commission, well, during the Planning Commission public hearing. So, you know, you've got some comments in there from staff. I think that, you know, it's important to recognize these are guiding principles, they would not be mandatory principles unless they were explicitly noted that way. I would recommend that if you do want to include them, that they be advisory-only. And I would say that, you know, staff's recommendation would be to remove the last paragraph, because, you know, it's quite limiting, and while I think it's important to acknowledge the ratio of lodging units to residential units, you know, using an exact ratio that you would have to maintain is, in my opinion, unnecessary. You know, another approach you could say that would also be pretty limiting or restrictive, but might be more palatable, or at least comprehensible to the public, is establishing like a maximum unit count, or, you know, count of RV spaces, you know, almost like a permanent growth boundary-type approach. It's very similar, and I wouldn't necessarily recommend either, but, you know, you all decide on policy, so.
And that's that whole purple section there?
It's on page 1, 275.
Yeah, I don't have the packet pages, but it's the last segment of 4.6.1.
Yeah. And so, you are kind of highlighting all the lettered sections, or just the last two sections?
Primarily just the last sentences. I think that the ratio is in letter E, and I think it's sufficient as written that way, without the exact ratio, you know, being a requirement. So, that's staff's opinion, you know, the Planning Commission voted to include this, so, you know, two pieces of advice you can consider.
We'll work on that language a little too, because it's not written, the part above as guiding.
Well, yeah, and again, that's for the council to decide on how you want that to read. So, the next section is going to feel much more familiar to you in relation to the conversations we've been having over the last six months for development standards. So, moving through these, once a parcel or parcels was already designated as an overnight accommodations overlay, or as having that overlay, then these are the standards that a development would be held to. So, these are administrative standards, they're not legislative, meaning there's not, unless clearly stated, there's no discretion in them. So, for energy developments in the hotel, motel, and residential units used as overnight accommodations districts, those developments would be required to produce 80% of their energy needs on-site through solar, geothermal, or other renewable energy sources. The Planning Commission decided last week to recommend that developments in the RV campground district produce only 5% of their energy needs on-site through those various sources. I think that was based on a public comment suggesting that RV campgrounds shouldn't be held to the same standard, because they have less control over the inefficient building designs that their guests stay in, and just the uncertainty in terms of how much power their guests will draw, because there's no consistency to the building type. I, you know, I was participating remotely at the Planning Commission meeting last week, while out on Family Matters, so I actually missed the discussion and motion around that change. So, to be honest, I can't give you too much context, or, you know, logic for supporting that reduction by such a significant amount. I think, you know, my recommendation would be, you know, something higher than that, and certainly, it's possible for the permanent structures to meet a higher standard than 5%. But that's what the Planning Commission recommended, so that's what you have in front of you. I think, you know, one area you may want to discuss between now and a vote is whether or not you would want to allow for a greater percentage of the energy requirements to be offset by renewable energy purchases, so like off-site renewable energy production. And then, I think one recommendation that's not in here, but was the subject of a conversation I had today with someone I consider to be a responsible developer, and also quite aware of energy production, is that we should, and also kind of general economic development, is that we may want to specify that the energy requirements only apply to the overnight accommodations portion of a mixed-use development. And so, the logic there is that we wouldn't want to disincentivize, or make it any more difficult for some of the non-loging developments to come online, and I think that, you know, with the new standards, we may see a lot more mixed-use development proposals. So, a couple of thoughts there. Lastly, one change that I would recommend in A4, so this is number four under energy development, is that we replace the lead gold or better reference to the lead zero specification that the Green Building Council is finalizing right now. And as I move through, I'm not going to read through all of these, I'm going to just highlight the ones that, you know, have either changed since our last meeting together, or in the Planning Commission vote.
And let me just weigh in quickly on A1 and 2.
Sure.
There are legal issues with the way that is structured, so we can't do that, we need to work on that.
Yeah, and I would suggest that there can be a difference in the treatment, but perhaps not so large.
How do you justify that?
We treat different uses differently all the time in our codes. You know, we treat, you know, single-family houses different than duplexes and triplexes, or garages differently from, you know, retail establishments, but that's a fairly significant disparity between the two, that I don't know is fully justified.
I would really like to see on 2 that the permanent structures, like you mentioned, because they're building them, and they can hold those to a higher standard, so keep those at the same standard that we keep the other units. And then, now, I don't know how you could even measure how much the, you know, the people that come in, their, you know, their RVs and their tents, and so not even worry about, but just the structures that go along with the campground, you know, the offices, the...
I would also suggest that we may want to integrate a requirement that these developments provide an annual energy audit, or some sort of, you know, compliance report with that energy requirement. So, I will work with legal counsel before your next meeting to come up with some draft language around that. So, the requirement to install graywater reuse systems for shared or group shower So, the requirement to install gray water reuse systems for shared or group shower laundry facilities has been added. That was recommended by the Planning Commission and staff. So, that would apply to all developments and it helps to address, you know, the difficulties of installing a gray water system for like a hotel or motel or condo development. And it's pretty easy to make sure that any, you know, group laundry or shower facility is connected to their gray water reuse system regardless of the development type. So, that has been added. The Planning Commission recommended that the requirement to provide covered lockable bike storage at a rate of one space per two lodging units not apply to campground and RV developments. Again, that was based on public comment from a campground owner that, that shared or lockable bike storage is never used and that in particular at a campground, that type of facility is ineffective because the folks staying there want their bikes, you know, attached to their campground or camper units. So, I, I still think it's, it's relevant for a hotel or a motel or a condo development because, well, at least for a hotel development, perhaps not a residential unit, because most of those developers don't want dirty bikes in the hotel rooms anyways. So, you may want to consider removing that requirement for residential units as well, which are likely to have garages or, or shared space. In D, the mixed use requirement, oh, before I move on, in transportation, 1D, the Planning Commission included in their recommended ordinance that a, an electric vehicle charging station be provided at the rate of one station per twenty-five units. In D, mixed use, the county attorney has noted that number one isn't a, you know, a mandatory requirement or anything that is really statutory in nature, and so it should probably be moved up to the purpose section, which we can do prior to your vote. And then the last thing I want to note is that in G, density and scale, in the packet, D3 was not presented correctly. So, in the version that you have, the maximum size of RV campground developments is shown as thirty-five RV spaces, but the Planning Commission recommended a maximum size for campgrounds at the, as the following, a maximum of forty RV spaces and sixty spaces total. So, if somebody was maxing out their, if somebody were maxing out their size, they could do a maximum of forty RV spaces and additional twenty tent sites. The logic behind that for the Planning Commission was parity with the other development types. It was also based on commentary from a campground owner that it wasn't economical to provide a campground or to build a campground at just thirty-five spaces. So, again, a policy decision there. And then the rest of, the ordinance is pretty much as you have seen it already in the table of standards and then again, moving the use specific standards of the four point six.
I have a question.
A lot of buildup. You still need to provide public comments, so don't forget that, or allow for a public comment.
I have a question on the forty RV spaces and the sixty other spaces. Does that include, like, you know, on a lot of those campgrounds, they have those little cabins?
Yeah, the, so a cabin would be, you know, put into, we might want to specify forty RV or KOA style cabin spots here. But like, I, I would include those in the structural maximum if you go that route.
What the, so it'd be forty RV sites and then up to sixty spaces? And then that extra twenty, that would be where the?
Tent sites, I think. So, we could, we could just?
The tent sites or? Go ahead.
You could specify at that, within that forty maximum, and again, this is you, for you to vote on, but interpreting the, the Planning Commission's motion, I think that they would say, let's limit the number of RVs, KOA style cabins, park model units, you know, any of the kind of like physical, you know, structural, you know, spaces that people were staying in to forty. And then, you know, an additional twenty tent sites would be acceptable.
So, the, so those houses, those little cabins would be in the forty?
I would think so.
Can you give us some perspective of the sixty bedroom motel that's recently been built?
So, we did provide a, at a recent Planning Commission, well, we've, we've presented to the Planning Commission and County Council an analysis of existing developments in the county. And to give you an example, I'll just throw out a handful of examples. The Moab Rustic Inn is fourteen thousand five hundred and sixty-nine square feet and has thirty-five rooms. The Apache Inn is about a thousand square feet larger and also has thirty-five rooms. The Bowen Motel is sixteen thousand three hundred and fifty-five square feet and has forty-one rooms. So, that's on the lower end. On the upper end, the Worldmark Wyndham, which is being constructed on Highway one ninety-one north of town, is two hundred and seventy thousand square feet and will have one hundred and fifty-two timeshare units. The Hoodoo, I don't have the square footage, but that's a hundred and fifteen rooms. The Wingate Wyndham next to Yolgezer is fifty-eight thousand square feet and one hundred and twenty rooms. Do you want me to keep going? Those are for hotels. For campgrounds, to give you a sense, the Dowd Flats RV Park at twenty-seven oh one South Highway one ninety-one that has seventeen full hookup sites. Up the Creek Campground in downtown Moab, two hundred and ten east, three hundred south is got twenty-four full hookup sites, and these all include the cabins. The Moab KOA has a hundred and ten. Slick Rock Campground has a hundred and fourteen for some in the middle. The Portal RV Park Campground has eighty. So, again, that gives you a range. So, you know, what you're instituting or what you presumably will be instituting, you know, certainly affects the nature of the developments that would come in front of the county. I think that, you know, one of the very frequent comments provided by the public was that, you know, we didn't want any more, they didn't want any more, what I call big box hotels or big blocky hotels. And so, you know, even if someone were to max out their project and, and build at that fifty thousand square feet and sixty bedrooms, you know, limit, it would still feel very different because the maximum building size would be fifteen thousand square feet and thirty-five rooms. Any questions for staff before you open it up to public comment? Seeing none, we'd go ahead and open this section of the public hearing for public comments. No need to fill out a card, so just come to the microphone and introduce yourself and happy to hear your comments.
My name's Dennis Silva. Live in Grand County. I think most of the residents in the county understand the levels of tourists as way too high and we're yet going to see another thirty-eight percent of rooms. You've heard this a hundred times. We probably have already degraded the visitor experience due to the overcrowding in visitation sites in the back country. And in all due respect to Zachariah's judgment, I think the ratio of accommodations to residential units is important for us to kind of complete this months-long effort of limiting overnight So, I wish you would support those measures that the Planning Commission suggested. This is a worthy effort by the council and the staff, and I want to thank you all. That's it.
Thank you.
My name is Liz Thomas, and I guess first off, like Dennis said, I want to thank you guys for ten months of pretty amazing work and the planning staff and the Planning Commission as well. I mean, as you know, in February, when you passed the temporary moratorium, it had pretty much overwhelming support. And I think you guys have just made amazing progress. I don't think anybody could have predicted back in February to get to where we're at I do think it's worth mentioning that, you know, in May, when we did a huge kind of sign-on letter in just a few days, we had seven hundred signatures from residents in the city and the county. And, and one of their main concerns was that we don't want to see any new overnight accommodations built until the pipeline's built out. And as Dennis mentioned, you've heard it a thousand times, but that's going to increase the number of nightly rentals by thirty-eight percent over what we have now, or almost, sorry, I think a couple have been built. And I think another thing to, to think about, even though there aren't the eligibility zones yet and the, that are, that are beyond the existing structures, you know, south of town is, most, most commercial properties just getting gobbled up by overnight accommodations. And it would be nice to save some, some property south of town so that other businesses that actually would help diversify our community and also actually add benefit to our community wouldn't have to compete with overnight accommodation developers south of town. And, and maybe there could be some small overnight accommodations, but they should have some other businesses associated with them. And I think it's just really important to try to keep that corridor without turning into just solid overnight accommodations. I don't know a better way of trying to hold the line other than, you know, what the planning staff, actually, they came up with some figures that we have forty more percent, forty percent more overnight lodging units right now than we have residential units. And that's a little scary. I don't know a better way to keep from going down a slippery slope and adding, you know, more overnight accommodations if we don't increase residential units. Maybe there's a better way, but I do think that we should come up with some sort of bright line and not start down a slippery slope so that we have a huge imbalance, a bigger imbalance between nightly rentals and residential units. I don't think I have any more to say, except thank you for all your hard work in getting this far.
Thank you.
Reed Pendleton, I've been here the last couple of months just kind of trying to express some opinions on the campground side of things. I just want to clarify just a couple of the things that we went over in the Planning Commission. When I addressed them about the energy requirement, my point I was trying to get across is that the facilities that we build, we can manage and be efficient in, and that's kind of what you mentioned. It's, it's the sites. I mean, literally, a campground is just open space. I mean, that's really all it is, is just open sites and then people come and park and they're just using utilities, basically. And we just don't have a way of regulating that because, you know, somebody could pull in in a tent and not use any energy, somebody could pull in in a forty-five foot bus at three ACs and it's a hundred and fifteen degrees outside and the ACs never shut off. So, I couldn't give them a number. It was, they just threw out five percent just to kind of move along. So, that's just kind of what happened in the Planning Commission as far as the energy was concerned. But I do think, I recommended energy credits. I looked into the Rocky Mountain Power Business Blue, whatever, Blue State, whatever it's called, buying the energy credits for each hundred kilowatts that you use. And I don't think that's a unfeasible thing for campgrounds to do, is to buy those energy credits to make up for the percentage that they wouldn't be producing. The other thing was on the, the density scale, the way that I kind of explained it was forty RV sites. The development I'm looking at would be forty RV sites and then I'd have twenty sites for cabins and tents. And the reasoning for that is that not all cabins are the same. Your KOA cabins, like I've got dry cabins that don't have any water, bathrooms, or anything in them. It's just kind of an upgrade from a tent. And so, I, I don't know how you classify those as an RV because they are different. And so, when I was talking to them, I specifically said, you know, for an RV, you know, with full hookups would be forty sites and then twenty sites would be for those cabin developments and additional tent sites. So, that's what I expressed to the Planning Commission as we worked through those numbers. The only question that I have, and it's maybe inconsequential, but on the open space requirement, I have a little bit of an issue with that because it doesn't necessarily designate the acreage requirement. The property I'm looking at, I'm not going to be developing over half of it. It's a large parcel if I'm able to develop it. So, maybe if there's any clarification that you can provide as far as acreage open space, is that required for the actual size of the development? You know, so if I develop five acres of a parcel, you have to provide this much space? Or is it for the actual land parcel? You know, because you've got a twenty acre parcel of land and you're only developing five acres of it, you know, which acreage are you looking at? Just a comment from me. The last comment that I have, well, I guess two more comments. The accommodations in the pipeline are strictly non-campground accommodations. I went over this last County Council meeting, how we have a net zero of, or a net of zero campgrounds that have been built in the last six years. So, for me, it's really hard to hear the arguments because I was at all those workshops about accommodations coming down the pipeline and accommodations per housing units and, and really, campgrounds aren't getting their fair shake of that because in reality, this town really needs another campground. And I have, you know, feet-on-the-ground understanding of that. So, and then the last thing, as far as eligibility to districts, based on what the Planning Commission voted on, it was the last part of their agenda and I think they just wanted it to be done, so they just threw it out to be all the existing properties. So, basically, that would allow for no new accommodations to be developed, is what they recommended. And so, I think that's basically a step backwards from the last six months that you guys have been making for progress to create development standards if somebody does want to create one. And so, I do feel like eligibility districts are important. If you want to designate, you know, where they are allowed and where they're not allowed, I'm concerned about allowing them in residential areas, you know, because you get people that are buying up houses, throwing solar on them and, you know, turning them into a nightly rental. But I do feel like there's areas of the county that development of accommodations would be a positive direction. So, I think that's all my comments for now. Thanks.
Thanks for that.
I had a question, actually. When you referred to the dry cabin, is that a climate-controlled sort of environment?
They do have AC units, but they don't have any water or sewer. There's different levels of cabins. I've got actually four different sizes of cabins, and so they're all different.
Thank you.
Any other citizen comments?
Yeah, if I may, I'd like to just provide a little bit of clarity and maybe some additional context. So in no particular order, the suggestion that the county has not seen any new campgrounds over the last six years is incorrect. In my time here, which is just five years, just off the top of my head, this council has approved at least four new campgrounds, five new campgrounds. Coleman Friar has built two. Matt Nissen has built one. Up the Creek Campground was converted -- Mobile Home Community was converted to a campground. Contractors Roost was recently approved, and the KOA has expanded by roughly twenty percent in that time period. So yeah, I have seen Hand Center Mile Campgrounds, and you have another one that's vested. So, you know, just off the top of my head, you know, the county has -- will, you know, once those are built out, will have approved, you know, roughly two hundred new campground spaces. So a little bit of clarification there. With respect to the ratio that is suggested as a sort of a reference point for the appropriate ratio of overnight accommodations to residential units, I want to clarify that staff certainly appreciates the use of that type of analysis as a guidance. I am a little bit uneasy using it as a hard number, and it's not even because I don't support the notion of an explicit growth cap or cap. I don't know that that's the appropriate metric to use. For instance, you may want to, you know, have a slightly higher or lower ratio. You know, as a tourism-based economy, you know, you're always going to want more, you know, visitors than residents in reality. And, you know, if you didn't have it that way, you'd be looking at even greater property tax increases.
Are you aware of any reliable study that puts a number out there?
Well, it's -- I don't know of any study that suggests like, oh, this is the ratio you want to target, like that's what balance looks like. The most prominent example of a cap is in Whistler, British Columbia. They are a renowned world-class resort destination, mountain town. And in Canada, the planning is a little different, but that community, as well as in Banff, Canada, they are two communities that established very strict caps on the number of lodging units that they would approve, and they have adjusted those numbers upward a couple of times after a great amount of analysis and debate. But they have been touted as being really good examples of, you know, how you could approach this issue of imbalance, right, in a resort community. But I think that the ratio, you know, included in the recommendation is maybe just not the metric that we would want. Now, I think if council wants us to continue exploring that, we'd be very happy to do so. I would also suggest that, you know, ordinance 595, which changed the use rights associated with overnight accommodations and put them into this overlay category, as well as the standards that are being proposed here fundamentally alter the land market for commercial property. And so I don't think that without that ratio in there as a, you know, guiding principle or even a mandatory one, that, you know, we're going to continue to see land development trends the way that we have seen over the last twenty years. So a little bit of additional context for you there. So any follow-up questions?
Do you feel like we have consensus on each of these items from council? Where do you think we go from here?
I think that's a question for the council.
I'm really excited about the couple ordinance giving something that's proactive, but I think it would be good, I mean, after we look, will we be able to see the changes that you're proposing and wording?
Yeah, we need to do a little more work on them, and then we'll
We will. I mean, I think it's only appropriate to include in the packet for the next meeting, you know, the clean version that was presented to you today, as well as some additional redline changes from that that the county attorney and I work on.
Yeah, I'm interested in looking at the districts a little more that were, you know, we voted for it to be the entire county, the hearing a lot. I mean, maybe a little more discussion on that before we vote on.
Unfortunately, I don't think that's going to be feasible. I mean, I am on vacation next week, and, you know, you'd have to call some special workshops because that's going to involve a fair amount of discussion and debate prior to the next packet coming out, which is why I was so adamant at the December third meeting that you all make a very conscious effort to determine whether you wanted to establish eligibility districts or not. So, you know, I don't want to say that time is out, and but in effect, time is out for the January seventh.
We can do that later.
But I want to say, yeah, I wanted to follow up with that, that there's no time clock on establishing those. So, you know, if you feel adamant that after you adopt these standards that you, you know, really want to establish eligibility districts, kind of like we did for the high-density housing overlay, then you can continue to do that and encourage the Planning Commission to work on those.
I can, in terms of the metrics or having some kind of cap in place, whether that's a ratio or a hard number or something like that, I think that at least as a guiding principle, if not as a steadfast line, that that's important to have included. I think the ratio is kind of tricky of like, what is the appropriate ratio for tourists and everything. And so I could be into other ideas.
Yeah, and I mean, I would sort of agree and underscore the importance of having that as an indicator for policy writ large in the county. You know, in terms of long-range planning and visioning and organizational development, you know, for local governments, you should have a dashboard of indicators that you're looking at, you know, for guidance, and that would be one of them.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's correct.
I think that dashboard idea is nice. I know that a lot of the early discussions focused around, you know, environmental resources, availability, water, and things like that. And I wouldn't like to see all those abandoned just by like, you know, how fast can we build houses versus how fast can we build hotels. So I think there are some other metrics that are important to consider. And I know that other times, as council's kind of voiced, that it's easier to be more conservative out of the gate and then relax those later. And I think it's important for citizens to know that this isn't being presented as open the gates to development again.
Yeah. And, you know, I've said it before to the Planning Commission and to the council and to inquiring citizens. You know, having worked in at least this development office for the last five years, I can assure you that no one feels like the red carpet is being rolled out for lodging.
And I appreciate that, and I know that, too. Not everybody has the wealth, the grasp that you have on the scenario. And so I think it'd be nice to kind of have that button there instead of just like, oh, they got to have nice shutters and then they can build, you know. So when it comes to the renewables and the percentages, you know, I think that LEED zero sort of standard would be nice to adopt when that comes online or to mimic.
But that, I'm suggesting just using that as, you know, a way to certify their compliance with the energy standard. So that's already in there. It's just that I provided the wrong reference.
Okay.
Rather than LEED gold or better, I think the appropriate reference from the Green Building Council is LEED zero.
And, you know, in terms of like, I would echo the, I think that campgrounds as well that are providing hookups, you know, could strive for higher than five percent. And whether there's some kind of thing in there about purchasing, you know, whether it's generated on-site or they're subscribing to other renewable sources, isn't a breaking point for me, but I would like to see high-energy standards for energy development.
Chair, please. Now, just to follow up on the campground, I'd like to see if there is a, the twenty additional tent sites, you know, I see that as being limited to strictly basic kind of primitive tent sites. And if it is something that's drawing energy, I'd like to see it sort of be subject to the more stringent eighty percent or, you know, what that number
What else before time is out?
And I want to just remind you guys that under our pending resolution ordinance or resolution, we have until the fourteenth to adopt those standards if we want to get them done by then. Otherwise, they're not going to apply to some projects that could potentially be in the pipeline. But I feel like this is our first moment, even though we've talked about these standards and we have done some straw polls about some of them, this is our first moment of really seeing the language. And to me, there's still a lot of work here. And so we only have one regular meeting left before that deadline. And so I'm really looking for you guys to articulate concerns you have, questions you have. I have numerous, you know. I've only been involved a small amount compared to, obviously, planning and even you guys. But, you know, I just want to make sure we're in a place where we think we're going to get there on the seventh, or do we need to go ahead and plan a workshop, workshopping this language specifically versus the standards in general? Where are you guys?
I think a lot was, you know, some of the big questions in the process was kind of what you would sign off on, too, and like what we could get away with, and some other kind of lines that needed to be, you know, sort of respected, I guess, in a way that wasn't going to expose the county to things.
Right. And there definitely are a few of those that Zachary and I just only talked about this afternoon or even emailed about. So we'll, you'll see a few things tweeted about my legal concerns.
I think just glancing at the calendar, that moving into the holidays would kind of be tricky. So it would either have to be kind of something sooner or something in January. And I don't know in terms of
You're going on vacation, right?
After the, after the first of the year. And, but you were going to take a stab at cleaning up some of the language that was here tonight?
Mm-hmm.
I don't know if it, do you see a lot of value in workshopping before that process happens, or is that more of a subject of interest?
Probably not. I mean, and it won't take me long, I think, subject to the current schedule, to weigh in on the legal stuff and propose, like we're done, you know, addressing legal issues. But I still think there's a lot here that, you know, in terms of percentages, number of bedrooms, number of units, there's a lot here that's still a stress. Mixed-use incidents are over there. What do these very principles look like? Not very new right now. So I'm concerned that we're going to get it done in time unless we push for a more workshop.
And we're looking at
But to be clear, I mean, we have had numerous workshops to go through the specifics of these standards. So you may, you know, you bring up a question about, you know, building size and rooms. We've talked about that in at least two workshops in a planning, in a council meeting. So, you know, it doesn't mean that you can't change your minds again, but I want you to remember all of the meetings that we have had leading up to this point.
I feel like we're in a pretty good place. And if it's, if there's something with the verbiage and the language, because as we worked through it in the workshops, it was kind of like in a table sort of format. And, you know, if there was some kind of miscommunication or some kind of thing didn't connect between the tables and the charts and how it's written now, you know, we can look at that. But as
And that's where I was going with consensus. If y'all feel like on each of these sections y'all have reached consensus, that's why I'm very interested. After having looked at the language now.
And as was the case with the, you know, first ordinance that you adopted, ordinance 595 over the summer, and, you know, pretty much every other policy, you know, you all have to articulate that to staff. I mean, I can answer questions, I can provide research, but the consensus building has to occur at the dais.
How many planning meetings before were voted on this?
Say that again?
Planning Commission meetings.
Oh, they already held their public hearing. So you're holding your public hearing tonight. You don't need to hold another public hearing. You know, state law would allow you to vote on it tonight, but, you know, per council policies, you would vote on this at the January seventh meeting.
Well, I'm pretty comfortable with it. If we could fix up the language so that it was past legal muster, then, and, because we can, you know, if we're seeing that something isn't working, we can tweak it later. But it is important that we have it done.
I, you know, I probably would be prudent to schedule a workshop for the Friday of the first week of January ahead of your regularly scheduled meeting, just to have it on the calendar so that that would be like January third or something. Be like January third before you would vote on it, just so that, you know, you have one more opportunity outside of a, you know, meeting where you would vote to request final changes. You know, I'm sure that Christina and I will have an updated version of this ordinance before then.
Okay. Availability for Friday the third?
Third of June.
Or Thursday that week. I mean, just something that, you know, on that Thursday or Friday or even Monday, or it could be the day of your meeting. It doesn't have to be before, but
I mean, day of's always easy to do, but I don't know how much that gives us for time for edits or adoptions unless we did something in the morning, and then
Yeah, and I don't, I don't think that, you know, the types of changes we'd be looking at are like massive textual changes.
When are you back?
Well, I should say I'm not here on the second or the third, so I hate for you to do this. I'm urging, and then may not be there, but I'm here that Monday, Tuesday.
What about on the seventh?
Sixth or seventh.
Okay.
If that stood on the seventh, if it was sixth.
I think the morning of would be fine.
Between now and then, could you, if there were legal things that were worth considering, could you forward that along?
Yeah, we'll, I mean, we'll try to get those in the packet before it goes to print so you'd see them.
Yeah.
Seven of them.
So have it on the sixth or the seventh.
Let's do it on the seventh in the, can you do the morning?
Um, yes.
On Tuesday, Wednesday, meeting, morning? No. How early in the?
Well, I hate to make two trips to town.
Sure.
If I came in in the morning, then what do I do? Eight hours.
You could help them edit our changes if we prefer.
I hate to keep running back and forth. You know, it's a forty-mile round trip.
I do want to provide time for, you know, if there was anything from the workshop. So
How about one o'clock?
Is that enough time? One o'clock to, is that enough time for you?
Might be. Might not be. I don't know. Sure. Might be, might not be, you know, sure, let's go with that.
Is that still May? It's December, uh, it will...
Be as short as can be.
Yeah, this is the end of the year, so, great, okay, um, other feedback tonight? Let's plan on a one o'clock on December seventh, to workshop, January seventh, to workshop before, uh, our regular scheduled meeting. Were there other clarifications you had from us tonight, Dr. Roy? Any other public's comments?
So we're thinking two o'clock, three o'clock, one o'clock, or...
Let's go one o'clock. Uh, this portion of the public hearing will remain open until, I don't have a twenty-twenty calendar.
Till Christmas at five.
Till Christmas at five, really? Is that the, uh...
We better extend it longer than that.
Let's, let's do, yeah, let's do, uh, Monday, what date is that?
Well, let's not do it till, yeah, Monday, the sixth.
December thirtieth, no, we need, right? Monday, uh, public, comments can be submitted online to council@grandcountyutah.net or dropped off in person at the council administrator's office next door until Monday, December thirtieth, at five P.M. Great.
That just means that, let's see, would it make the packet in time? Yes, it would.
All right, is it after six? Can we have these other hearings?
Yeah, it's after six.
Okay, uh, this brings us to item II, public hearing to solicit public comment on amending the twenty-twenty salaries of county council members in Grand County to provide for a one point seven cost of living adjustment. Do we need a discussion around this?
I think we just, we can have public input, but didn't we decide to...
So you want me to...
It's Noah...
Chris.
It's Noah Boyd.
Okay, so, uh, the county council's, uh, compensation is contained within our optional plan for government, and, uh, that's one of the reasons why we would have to have a public hearing if the council were to approve a COLA for the county council, uh, and the other is because they're elected officials. Earlier in the day during the workshop, the council agreed to remove, um, the cost of their cost of living from the budget, and so I'm assuming that that means that they're also not going to approve a cost of living adjustment for, for themselves, 'cause there's no budget for it now. So perhaps this is a, uh, a moot, um, public hearing, but it was advertised, and so we should still solicit public comments.
Any comments from the public about us turning down a COLA? I would entertain a motion to suspend the rules and hold a vote on it tonight.
You don't have to vote on it if you're not gonna do anything.
Well, okay, I just would, if it was turned down, it might save some citizen comments coming in later, but... This portion of the hearing will remain open until December thirtieth, uh, if you want to try to convince the council to take the COLA, which no one plans to and there's no budget for, you can, uh, send, submit comments to council@grandcountyutah.net...
Send a donation.
Or drop off, uh, comments next door at the council administrator's office. Clean enough? All right, item JJ, public hearing to solicit public comment on amending the twenty-twenty salaries of all other elected officials in Grand County to provide a one point seven cost of living adjustment.
Okay, so, uh, state code also requires that, uh, any elected official whose compensation is changed, uh, has to, uh, be by way of a public hearing, and so, I've drafted an ordinance, uh, that increases the attorney, sheriff, clerk auditor, assessor, treasurer, and recorders' salaries by one point seven percent, and, uh, that is what is before you, the total cost associated with these COLAs would be eight thousand, four hundred and eighty-two dollars and sixty-one cents approximately.
Thanks for that. Any comments from the public? Any comments from council? Seeing none, we'll leave this portion of the public hearing open until December thirtieth at five P.M. Comments could be submitted electronically at council@grandcountyutah.net or dropped off in person at the administrator's office here in the courthouse next door. That brings us to, Doug, did we, did we lose our, uh...
Oh, I read...
Well, here's, we have a sign thing?
Are we gonna...
All right, this brings us to the Grand County Community Reinvestment Agency Special Meeting, do we need any pauses, or...
Yeah, just, uh, recess the regular meeting.
Uh, we will recess the regular council meeting at seven twenty-three. Clean enough? Do we need to, uh, switch recordings? All right, I would like to call to order this special meeting of the Grand County Community Reinvestment Agency on Tuesday, December seventeenth, twenty nineteen, at seven twenty-three. Those present are Greg Halliday, Mary McGann, Gabe Voytek, Rory Paxman, Evan Clapper, council administrator Ruth Dillon, and clerk auditor Chris Baird. Uh, first up is approval of minutes from February nineteenth, twenty nineteen. They are on the back of the agenda.
I make a mo, I make a motion to approve the minutes from February nineteenth, two thousand and nineteen, and authorize the chair to sign all associated documents.
Motion made by Mary McGann, seconded by Rory Paxman, any discussion? Uh, seeing none, I will call for vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Uh, all those opposed, all those abstaining, motion passes four to zero with Voytek abstaining. Next up is presentations, seeing none, we'll move on to discussion items. None, action items, none, public hearing, this is a public hearing to hear public comment on the twenty-twenty Community Reinvestment Agency budget, Chris.
Okay, so the Community Reinvestment Agency, uh, is not currently, um, in operation, and so this is a hypothetical budget, and, uh, which we would need if we would, uh, institute the Community Reinvestment A- Agency at any time, inform agreements with other taxing entities to, um, to do tax increment, uh, in the area that this was established for, which is around the USU, uh, campus, and so, unless that happens, no money will be brought in or spent, but, uh, in order to legally spend money, you have to have a budget, and so this is a hypothetical budget for the first year of the Community Reinvestment Agency if they were to, um, come into operation.
Thanks for that. Uh, I did have a question, is, when, under projects, where it says University of Utah Campus seventy thousand, um, what is the seventy thousand for? Which part of the project?
Well, we, um, we've already established a twenty-five thousand dollar a year debt on, uh, the remainder of the infrastructure, so that would, that could be a part of it, and, uh, the city has as well, so those two combined would be fifty thousand right there, um, but again, it's more a placeholder on, um, establishing probably, um, revenue to cover, you know, shortfalls or new debt that would come up, um, again, it's all hypothetical, these numbers, um, if, if they were to come into operation, they would have to, um, detail out, uh, a, uh, a budget according to the agreements of all the other taxing entities that, um, signed on with the CRA, and so, the way that the law works is that it's all, operates now by agreement, and so that leaves it pretty open-ended in, in terms of how it would end up working, but since there are no agreements in place, we really don't know how it would end up.
So the ten thousand for professional services is also just a placeholder?
I mean, if, if we do get to the point, I believe, if, if you, we bring in over a hundred thousand dollars in revenue, then you have to put ten percent of that, I believe, toward affordable housing, and that's, uh, a requirement of statute, um, beside that, um, it would really have to be worked out, and obviously, you're looking at revenue from all these different taxing entities, you know, under the assumption that they would, um, agree to be involved, and they don't have to, but this is just a hypothetical budget, uh, that we would need in place in order to, uh, begin operations. At the time that operations began, they would probably amend the budget to reflect some more realistic agreements.
Great. Please.
Down Globe Projects, it's not the University of Utah Campus, Utah State, University Campus...
Yeah, so that's a typo. It probably happened last time, 'cause this is the exact same budget we passed last year, it's probably the same typo.
We didn't catch it. That's funny.
That's the university I went to, I probably wrote that typo.
Sorry, apologies, I had to use the restroom, and I, uh, thought there was, uh, a few more gentleman arguments before you got to this, but, I answered your questions.
How close are we doing in our local agreement?
Uh, I think that there's a lot of relationship building that needs to be, some of the taxing entities, we're, uh, we're...
I think when they see the university starting up, they might be a little more agreeable.
Yeah, I mean, I think that, uh, so, uh, you know, if you remember from when, uh, I was advocating for the creation of this, uh, agency and, and project area, um, you know, I think it has a tremendous amount of potential to facilitate desirable community and economic development outcomes, uh, including a higher education institution, affordable housing, and also, you know, economic diversification, uh, we did a lot of work to establish the agency and the project area boundaries, um, I think that there are a few, uh, strategic approaches that may make an interlocal agreement with the other taxing entities more likely, but, um, we need to get you and the school board in the same room.
Great. In terms of the hearing, do we wanna leave comments open after tonight?
Yeah. We didn't, I, I mean, I don't...
I just, because...
I don't want, I don't wanna diminish the role of public comment by any stretch of the imagination, but I don't think that this is a budget that is going to generate a lot of public comment, and, um, I'm sure that, uh, Chris noted that it is equivalent to the budget last year, and, you know, is really a hypothetical budget, uh, absent any interlocal agreements anyways, right now, it's not that the agency's not generating any tax increment.
Does the agency have an email address?
No.
All right, then I will end this section of the public hearing, uh, unless there's any pub, uh, comment from citizens in the room?
So I don't think the CRA has any policy against voting to approve the budget, right now.
It does not.
Okay, so we're done?
The hearing's done.
Well, if you wanna approve the budget right now, you can, without suspending policy, 'cause there is no policy.
Mary?
I move to approve the bu, two thousand and twenty budget for the Community Reinvestment, um, and authorize the chair to sign also chair documents.
Second.
Agency not funded.
Thank you.
I knew I was saying that wrong.
All of us in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Do we need a motion to come out of recess?
We adjourn this one.
Oh, horse, how silly, any need for a closed session? No, I, with, uh, Community Reinvestment Agency. Uh, seeing none, this brings us to the end of the Community Reinvestment Special Meeting Agenda, and I will adjourn this meeting at seven thirty-two. That being said, all right, we are coming out of recess at seven thirty-two, our regular meeting of the Grand County Council is back in session. That brings us to item KK, Mary?
I make a motion that we go into closed session to discuss character competency, professional and physical or mental health of an individual.
Uh, we do, uh, motion made by Mary McGann, is there a second? Seconded by Rory Paxman, discussion, we have four separate closed session items, are we gonna go...
Uh, we only have two.
Uh, oh, sorry, what's MM? That's not closed session?
No.
Okay, so KK and LL, and we're gonna do these separately, or one big happy closed session?
They're not recorded, so it can be one big happy.
Okay, is that okay with you, Renee? Okay.
And you can do it in whichever order you like.
And, uh, if we're have...
They're both character competence, in other words.
If there are other council members calling in, should they close, call in during this open session, or can they be called in during closed session? Ooh, curveballs.
We don't really care.
Let's get everybody on the line before we go into closed session. I believe Jaylen would...
If there's more than one calling in, it might be better for them to use the conference?
Sure, let's try it.
I think, but there's code and everything.
Okay. Okay.
So are you waiting on a vote until you get the other council members on, or did we vote all right?
I just thought, that feels like, for the public record, to have them attending in the meeting, or participating in the meeting before closed session.
That makes sense.
So, yeah.
So Chris does want to be used?
Yes.
Sure, I, yes.
And you're gonna call on that call? Do you wanna just try some calls? Yeah, let's just try, it's gonna take a minute.
Okay, um...
Do you wanna call him on yours, and we can just, uh...
I'm gonna pass two thumbs around.
Okay.
We can all go huddle around the table.
Hey, you're on speaker here at the council, uh, we're getting ready to go into closed session. So don't say anything.
Uh, the time is seven thirty-five, council member Wells has joined the meeting, there's a motion on the table to go into closed session for items KK and LL, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Kurt, is that a aye for closed session?
So, hold on just a sec, the motion is to go into closed session, discuss character professional competence or physical or mental health of an individual. KK, LL, and MM all have to be done in open session.
Thank you, I, thank you, do I need to adjust that summary? There was no answer from Jaylen.
So Curtis, the ones that you wanted to talk to will not be in closed session.
Well, he wants to be in closed session.
All right.
Okay, he wants to be in closed session.
I misspoke the summary of the, your original motion was correct, I misspoke the summary, the original miss, motion on the table was to go into closed session for character professional competence or physical or mental health of an individual.
Seconded that?
It was seconded by Gabe Voytek.
By Rory, actually.
Rory, yeah.
By Rory.
Yeah, I don't mean, I'm just gonna give it up.
I'm gonna recall the vote, all those in favor of going into closed session?
Aye.
Aye, Curtis, all right, motion passes six to zero, now we can...